Have to.
Hey, you made it.
I made it, really like pulled in just now.
And he said he was like, he's trying to dig up, dig up stuff and I'm like dude, that's, it doesn't matter where you're at, like there's always gonna be something in that check off box you still gotta find.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
I like him a lot. Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's your experience, but sometimes when you catch them when they're older like that, you get a middle aged guy, they catch on quick to nice and even.
Well, yeah, they're not, they're not, usually not so full of ego like.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear it, I'm not that I shouldn't tell you any different, but he is a good guy and more. He'd be like, that guy needs to find a job.
I, I can't now because I'm not controlling it anymore.
Oh, you're not?
Yeah, that guy's an idiot. I, I won't, I won't.
But you could.
Hey, I texted Rich and I'm not sure if you guys have gotten back to me yet, we'll see, but you can go ahead and get started.
Alright. It's six oh two, should we call the meeting to order?
You? Alright.
Alright, man.
It's really, it's really not so much training and just um.
There, um, just a discussion, but um, as far as like meetings and, and how the meeting, the meetings should operate and how they should, how they should flow. You know, you and I had had a couple of conversations early on um, through this hotel process about the meetings and, and um, I've, I've recognized a couple of issues, let's not say issues, but things that we could, we could tighten up within the planning commission and also in the city council and I've tried to work on that as well. Um, just with the flow of the meetings and how things um, work and how, how we run those, especially when it comes to um, kind of, we don't need to be stringent on the Robert rules of order, but you know, on Robert rules of order, but something close to that and um, it helps with uh, minutes a lot because for instance, what will happen is we'll, we'll be having a discussion about a certain topic and then a motion will be made. And then there'll be further discussion that's on some other topic and, and that happens at city council level too and so pretty soon, the people making, taking minutes are like, wait, hold on, where, what are we doing here, where, where are we at and why has this conversation gone somewhere else and so, things like, like that where if we, if we stay on task specific to what we're talking about, then it makes the meeting a lot more clear. It makes the minutes a lot more clear and it really helps us in um, situations where the meeting is called into question about how, how or why something got approved or what happened with this or what happened with that, so that's one of the things, I made a few notes and this is really informal, this isn't anything, you know, that we need to get crazy about and it's also not anything about um, any one individual, it's just things that um, we've noticed, um, or I've noticed as the mayor and then that staff has, has noticed a little bit too and again, not only with planning commission but um, city council, so. Uh, staying on topic is one of those things, um, the other thing that has come up recently um, that we kinda got under control on the city council level. Um, and I don't know if it's happening, I don't know if it's happening with the planning commission or not, but um, texting during a meeting can be really problematic, even if it's not amongst yourselves. It just oftentimes people will think, what the heck's actually going on, is there somebody in the, in the audience texting you what to say or those types of things, um, so. Every now and then, and I'm guilty of this because of work, I'll, I'll get text messages or, or emails and I try not to check those, so. One of those things, just keep that to an absolute minimum if you can because that, that stuff can come up to bite us. And anything that's happening during the meeting, if someone calls that into question, it's actually discoverable and grandma and they'll wanna look at your phone and pull all your text messages and, you know. Most likely, there's nothing that, that you're trying to hide, but you also don't need the public in your personal business, so. One of those things, just to kinda keep um, in mind. Um, and certainly don't be texting each other. You know, we're, we work for the public and we do our business in the public and so if you have something to talk about amongst one another, keep it in the public, that's, that's kind of the goal, um, which also, and this again happens with city council as well. Not texting, but if uh, Trevor and McKenna are sitting here and we got one conversation going on over here and they're having a conversation over here and, you know, Ray and, and Scott are over there and they're having a sidebar conversation, pretty soon, nobody really knows what the heck is actually going on in the meeting and the minutes don't reflect any of that and so sidebar conversations need to be minimal to zero, just, it, it becomes problematic, not only because it messes up the minutes, but nobody really knows what's actually happening in the meeting and so those types of things are, are difficult, so don't, when you can, you know, keep those, keep those to a, a absolute minimum, um. I know, um, again, this is not a personal thing, but I know that there, there has been some feelings that maybe um, members of the planning commission weren't respectful of each other, maybe in a way that they should be, again, not a personal attack on anyone, but let's, I, I just wanna make sure that everyone feels like they have the time to, to share what they wanna share, um, and that we're being respectful, respectful of one another in these meetings, we're, we're all serving and so, you know, try to give everybody ample time to share what their thoughts and opinions are. But on the other hand, make sure that when you're sharing something in a meeting, that it's on topic and valid and, you know, it, it doesn't, doesn't do any good to have a tangent. And that hap- you know, we're all guilty of that periodically, but the, but the goal is to keep meetings respectful and the tangents to a minimum and just, um, you know, give everybody the respect that, that they deserve and so, um, I'm just looking at my notes here, I don't think I have anything else really about, about meetings, um, like I said, I just wanted to be really informal and take just a few minutes, but not bore everyone to death, I'm, I'm no expert in running meetings either, um, but I, but I do wanna make sure that as um, a planning commission, you guys feel like, one, you have my support as the mayor and two, that you feel like you have the ability to run the meetings and, and handle business as you see fit, but then keeping those kind of within parameters of, you know, what's, what's respectful and professional and, and making sure everyone feels like um, they have the ability to speak their mind and, and share what they think is important in these meetings, especially when we're dealing with controversial topics and we don't have very many of those here luckily, so, you know. It's, it's all good, but um, again, it, nothing, nothing real uh, that's a really big deal, but just a few things to kinda think about and consider, any um, questions, concerns? Anything I can be uh, more supportive on for you guys and gals as a planning commission? I, I, I really appreciate what you do and um, it doesn't go unnoticed, at least from, from my perspective, I know it's thankless, but at least.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you maybe give us a little bit of guidance with respect to um, the, the role that we're fulfilling here, right?
Yep.
How we do that by way of the voting that we engage in, meaning like, and specifically, you talked about being respectful to each other, right? And I think that that's absolutely appropriate, we all need to do that. I think part of that though, is that we're all also operating within the confines of whatever the position entails, if that makes sense. Talked about going off on tangents and things like that.
Yeah.
It just seems to me that um, that I would like at least to know the guardrails that we should be operating within when it comes to what information we're considering and then how that translates into a vote. What those guardrails are and how our votes should be motivated when it comes to that, or maybe it doesn't need to be, maybe there are no guardrails, I don't know. But I'm just asking because I'd like to understand that, I, I feel like I saw a little bit of maybe things being outside of the guardrails and, but I could be wrong entirely, so I'm just, maybe you can let us know that a little bit.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's actually a really good question and, and it's hard because um, you know, you guys as a planning commission, you're, you're talking about some pretty um, important projects and, and well, let's not say important, but controversial and projects that, that come up and that, you know, the public is here and they're screaming at you and you're trying to, to navigate this meeting and you're trying to navigate where this falls within the code and all those things, so um, it can be difficult. The, the, the main thing to remember, and I think everyone knows this, but it's, I guess a good reminder is, your, your job as a planning commissioner is really advisory, so, you know, basically, your job is to apply the law, not to make the law, and so you, you, you get the, the facts of, of the project and then you have the facts of the, of the law, whether it be the city code or state code, depending on what you're talking about, and, and your job is to say, okay, here's this issue, does it fall within these codes as they're outlined and if, if so, then really um, even if from a personal perspective, you hate it, if it falls within the code, you should be approving. Um, or you should be voting for something or in favor of, um, even though sometimes that's difficult because you personally disagree with the project or whatever, you know, and we often run into that where it's like, I hate the fact that this is gonna happen, but it falls within the law and um, so as long as that happens, you should be voting in favor of and that's what really should motivate your vote, you know, here, here's the, here's the facts, doesn't fit within the code and if so, we should be voting in favor of it. The one good thing that you do have going for you when it comes to, to the code and making changes of the code is there are things that we'll send to you, as you know, to review and say, hey, here's this code, we think it needs to be adjusted, we, we're asking as a council for your input on these items and that's a, that's a place where you don't really get to make the decision to make the rules, but you kinda make the rules. Um, and so that's, that's a little bit more of a position where you can say, well, this is my opinion and this is what I think the code should say and how, or the intent of the code should be. And then you can vote how you feel about that, but it's still advisory, so that doesn't mean that that's what's gonna be accepted by the council, but it is at least a place where you have some input on what the, what the law is versus what, versus whether or not the project fits within the law.
Yeah, so.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Am I missing anything else?
Nope, I have one follow on to that, but uh, it's your Katie.
Yeah, one real quick, so um, the items that we look at are usually their fault, they always fall under the category of being either administrative and that's like what Jeremy was talking about, where if it meets the code, then we have to approve it, so the conditional use permits that we were looking at, those would fall under that category, uh, subdivisions fall under that category. At the top of my staff reports, I'll try to put administrative or legislative, but code amendments, zone changes, annexations, any of those things are legislative and in that case, your opinion is very important. And like what we're gonna talk about later tonight, absolutely, we want everyone's opinion on, on how we should go with things.
Well, and honestly, now um, the legislature has changed things in the last couple of years to where um, traditionally, a lot of the, not a lot, some of the administrative things that um, take place within the city have been coming to the city council for approval and, and that's changed where you guys really, and I, and I think it's good, um, you know, we have a good group of commissioners here, you guys know what's going on. Um, I, I trust you to make the right decisions and all of those things and so, I, I do think it's good, taking the, the legislative branch of the government out of the administrative decisions, you know, I, I think that's good and you guys will, you guys will see more of those than, than you would have a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
But I do think that's good to separate those two things.
The one follow on was um, so you had mentioned that our role is to look at the information before us and you look at the code, does it meet the code, right?
Right.
So that's part of the decision making process here is to determine, our vote is that code compliance, right? So following that, what weight do you believe the planning commission should have or value it should give to staff reports, opinions from the city attorney when it comes to some of those questions, right? So we have to make a decision, but we're also staring at a staff report that has some opinions.
Right.
Right, from staff.
Yeah.
How much weight should that be given by the planning commission members?
Um, you know, I, I think honestly quite a bit, um, especially considering um, you know, Katie takes her job pretty seriously, very seriously and she does a really good job and so I, I think that, I think it's okay to have questions, I think it's okay to, to consider, well, did she think of everything? Um, and absolutely, I think you, you should feel like you can have those types of conversations, but I also think that um, you should give quite a bit of weight to those staff reports, you're talking to experts, people who are, you know, intimately familiar with the code. Now, does that mean that they, that they couldn't possibly make a mistake? Of course not, but I, but I think they should, that, those should be weighted pretty heavily. Um, when it comes to legal opinion, you know, we pay an attorney for a reason, so I, I would hope that if he's giving a legal opinion, that we would give that quite a bit of weight and, and you know, trust that our attorney's gonna steer us in the right direction, hopefully, you know, he, he's gonna do that and so far, I believe he has and, and has given us, you know, sound legal advice. Uh, so, so I, again, I don't think that there's ever a time where you shouldn't, where you, where you can't question something, but, but I do think they should hold quite a bit of weight, um, because they're essentially expert opinions.
Can I add one more thing onto that? So I think um, please, I'd love to have more eyes on these projects, cause I'm a one person planning department and that's one of the best things about having a planning commission in the small cities. I, I don't have to stress as much about making a mistake myself because I have the backup of you guys to make sure somebody else is looking at the work we do. Um, as far as city attorney, I would say, if you have questions about what his opinion is and you're looking through a staff report, maybe he put an opinion in there, which isn't very frequent, but if it did and you questioned that, I would, I would ask you to bring it to us before the meeting. Give us a chance to have you talk with the attorney if needed, um, because I don't know that it's appropriate to be questioning the city attorney in a public meeting, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I didn't really agree with that, but, but I think that's accurate and, and you know, outside of it being something pretty glaring, I would hope that we could talk through that or, you know, we, we have other um, resources at our disposal, you know, if we're worried about or questioning some opinion from our attorney, he's got an entire firm of colleagues that he can refer to, um, and then there's also, you know, as you know, like the property rights on Ludsmann and places like that where we can turn for either confirmation that this is sound legal advice or, you know, confirmation that it's not. Uh, but I do think that it's, it's most appropriate if we can catch those quickly and early rather than, you know, in a meeting. Certainly, I would say that if you're worried that this is some opinion that's leading us into some legal problem and you, you know, you gotta be careful with that, but I, I would rather you raise your hand in a meeting and say, I'm a little worried about this, um, even in a public meeting, than have some legitimate concern and just let it go, cause that also can give us some trouble, right? Really, our job is to, is to, especially as a planning commission, apply the code, but also, you know, don't unreasonably expose the city just because you're worried about raising a question.
Yeah.
But I also, I, 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 I'll just fa- uh, follow up a little bit with what Katie said, I, I do um, appreciate the fact that the council can work as a team and that includes Katie, so if, if you guys see things or have questions or wonder, hey, did we, did we think about this or did we think about that, of course, she's not gonna catch everything, um, so I, my expectation as mayor is that everyone can work as a team and, and we can come forward with the best outcomes, that's the goal here, is to do the right thing for the city and for the citizens and, and that's the ultimate goal, so I think you should be able to work together as a team and question one another and have hard conversations, um, as long as they're respectful. Anything else?
Thank you for answering my questions.
Yeah, of course, hopefully, it's not all just BS.
No. It was good.
I, I can BS with the best, I might be just telling you a bunch of lies, you never know. Alright, well, if there's no other questions, uh, again, I, for what it's worth, I appreciate what you do and I know that uh, take time away for your families and everything else to do all this work and it's often underappreciated, so. At least for what it's worth, I appreciate you, no one else does, at least there's that, so. If there's no other questions, I'm gonna let you carry on with your meeting and I'm gonna go to another meeting.
No, thank you for taking the time, um, I do think like when the opportunity affords to have you pop in, I, I'm not gonna set a timeframe, but once a quarter has, has needed.
Oh, you're not gonna set a timeframe, but you're gonna give me an expectation.
Yeah, I do think it's good, like I do think it's valuable to ensure we're on the same page and that we're aligning um, your vision with what, how we're running this meeting and, and so again, thanks for taking the time to come in, um, I did throw like once a quarter out here, right, but.
Oh, you're fine.
Like something on, like I'm not saying you need to be here every month, I'm, I'm more like a, you know, it'd be nice to pop in once in a while on the line, cause it, it starts to become a lot to catch city council meetings and to catch.
Right.
Planning commission meetings, et cetera, so.
And I, and I'm happy to do that, honestly, I, I will say I haven't in the past, um, because I try to keep it a little bit separate.
Sure.
Um, just so you guys don't feel like I'm looking over your shoulder and micromanaging, because I certainly don't wanna be that, um.
I don't feel that way.
Well, well, no, I'm not saying that you do, but, but I think that it could turn into that if I were here at every meeting.
Sure, sure, yeah.
So I try, I, you know, I don't, I don't want that to happen, I, you guys are here for a reason and I trust you to do the right thing, but I'm happy to pop in, I think, I, I also think there's some value there. I just don't want it to be, I don't want you guys to feel like I'm looking over your shoulder.
I guess maybe we could even turn that around, it could be, you know, it could be ten minutes with the mayor, with us, with you, maybe not necessarily your agenda, but more of uh, hey, anything on your mind, quick check in kind of a thing.
Yeah.
If that, if you feel like that would sort of eliminate that, that feeling, we could turn it around, I just feel like that bidirectional communication um, I think would be, would be awesome, uh, if, if you're, the opportunity.
I'm happy to do that if.
I don't know how the rest people feel, but like sometimes it's nice to be like, what's the stance on this or the direction on that or whatever the case may be.
On the planning commission I served on in West Jordan, the mayor would come to the meetings and it's great, he helped babysit my daughter on the occasion I had to bring her, so it was great, yeah, I was a big fan.
If I, if I did that, you might, you might kick me out of the meeting. Yeah, alright, well, yeah, I'm happy to do that, I, I, I think that there's some value there as well, so.
Yeah, and again, I, I wouldn't say that, you know, every third month, I'm gonna expect to see you, but as your schedule allows, that'd be awesome.
Can I make one comment too for Katie, I think this is really valuable information and maybe you might wanna consider if it's possible, if people agree, like if you could consolidate this into a little document with some pointers and it goes to new planning commission members, you know what I mean, I think that this is kind of the basis of a lot of what we do here and it's hard to know when you first get started, you know what I mean? This is kind of a good starting point for, for what we're doing here and I think it's good to be able to read that, so, just for what it's worth.
I, I, I think that's a good idea, I, you know, honestly, traditionally, we've, we've kinda just flown by the seat of our pants because, not be, because we want to, but because we're small and everybody's just trying to do what they can and all those things, but, but I think um, the more professional we are, the more um, the more we provide those types of trainings and those types of, you know, like a planning commissioner handbook, so to speak, wouldn't have to be a big book, but something that's like, hey, here, here's kinda what your, your role is, um, I think the more professional and um, organized we can be, the better, but.
Well, and there's resources too, so if you've been on like Luau, the land use academy site, or if like, or there's the, the land use book as well and stuff.
Right.
I know that some cities will provide those for like new commissioners and that could be.
It's particularly.
Good suggestion.
Particularly, and you're absolutely right, and I haven't dove deep on that, I have read through some of that, but I think it's particularly valuable to hear it directly from the mayor, like for us here, this is like what, you know, we want you to be working on specifically, you know what I mean? So that we're all just kind of on the same, the same page, but you know, that's a good point, I wouldn't mind some land use academy books.
We can order them.
It's light reading, it's light reading.
Yeah.
I, if anyone is interested, I haven't brought this up for a little bit, but I've got several extra copies of um, it's called ground rules and it was written by a land use attorney. Excellent resource.
Craig Call.
Craig Call.
He was, he was there today.
He's great, so if you're interested, I have copies in my office.
If there's any, any resources like that that we can, we can help provide you that you hear about, know about, learn about, whatever, let Katie know, I, I, I wanna support you, I wanna make sure you have the resources you need, I wanna make sure you have the information that you need, the knowledge that you need to, to do a good job here, um, so. If there's, if there's any other support we can provide, or I can provide as the mayor, I, I'm certainly um, happy to provide those. I just may not know what it is, so, and I'm stretched a little thin, so, there you are. I wanna be as supportive as I can, but sometimes I miss a lot of things, so just speak up and I'm happy to take care of it, so.
Perfect.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Yeah, of course, thank you, carry on, I'll get out of your way. You guys can do what you came here to do.
Yeah. Okay, you ready to move on to item three?
Let's do it.
Okay.
Item three, did we cover two?
Call meeting to order and then trainings.
I, I did the heavy lifting.
Yeah, you did the hard work.
We're moving right along, we're halfway almost, oh, you're good, okay, so um.
Well, you don't get yelled at too much tonight.
I, yeah, I was, I was gonna make a joke, but let's, let's tighten it up, keep it professional. Yeah.
Okay, so um, last, or second item on the agenda is the title eighteen code amendment. I'm a little bummed because I had quite a bit of work done that I did, I was at a conference last week and at night, I got some work done, but I couldn't save it onto like the shared drive because I wasn't connected to it, so I shaved, saved it on the desktop. And my computer died and they couldn't recover it, so I'm feeling a little bit behind on all this, but um, that's okay, we're gonna pick it up where we left off and it should be easier the second time I have to do it, but I had, as I was going through it, I had some pretty big questions that I felt like we needed to address before I could really move forward and bring you a lot of detail on the, on the updates. So that's a lot of what we'll be talking about tonight and then first off, I just wanted to put out there the schedule that we're dealing with. Um, we, once we adopted the, or passed the pending ordinance, that started a clock that night, which February fourteenth, we have six months from then, um, that we can pause and we have to have something in place so that we can start moving forward by August fourteenth. So we do have a, quite a tight timeline, um, so I would say that we really need to finish our part of this and, and punt it to the city council by July, if we can get it done in June, that might even be better, just to give them two meetings if they need it to look at, but we could do July if we need to. Our next meeting is on June fifth, so usually it's on the third Thursday, but next month, that falls on a holiday, Juneteenth, and so our meeting is coming up sooner than usually, usually would, so June fifth, and at that meeting, I'd kind of like to evaluate where we're at after we're done discussing it, I'm hoping to have like a pretty good idea where the code's going by then and maybe even have it close, like really close to being able to pass on to the city council. And we can talk about if it's appropriate to like schedule another meeting in June or if like July's meeting will be good enough, but we'll get to that point, hopefully in the next meeting, June fifth. Okay, so moving on to the questions, my first question is about buffers, we talked about this last time, but I didn't feel like I got a really clear direction. Um, we talked about having a tiered system, like depending on the impact of the use, so the lower impact uses wouldn't require as much buffer treatment, they don't have as many like, as tall of a fence or as many trees on the boundary or, or as tall of trees, or maybe they don't have the distance that we. Or maybe they don't have the distance that we're gonna require for certain types of businesses, uh, so when it comes to that. The measure of like the distance from a business to a property, I wanted to know if we're going to. Say that, we talked about this quite a bit, but is it gonna be like to the zone, so if you're in the commercial zone, you have to have so much distance to a residential zone. Or is it to an existing residential property? And what are your thoughts on that? Because there's a, quite a few residential properties that are in the commercial zone right now. They're what we call like legal nonconforming, so that means they're allowed to stay, they're grandfathered in, but they're not. They're not the use that we're looking for, so I don't know, in some ways I think it'd be nice to kind of encourage them to change to a commercial use, but in other ways. I do wanna respect the people that are already living here and the citizens that live here. So how do we balance that and what do you guys think would be the right way to measure that, to put that in the code?
We haven't met yet, I'm Justin.
Sorry.
Trevor, nice to meet you. Trevor, I usually as chair just pick a direction and then we kinda go through it, um, you're certainly welcome to pass if you'd like more time to formulate your thoughts. Um, but I'll just, I'll kick it to you as the new guy, you can start us off with your thoughts, or you can pass and we'll circle back.
Um, I, I think it should be, uh, property lines and not zones, um, cause I think there could be more impact if you did a zone of like. There could be three sides that are zones and now we're asking for a hundred feet on all three sides and then that doesn't make sense to have a commercial property there, so that's my opinion.
I would say, uh, the residential property line, I think that there's people who bought or built and. They've either been there before the zones got changed, or they built thinking that they were getting one thing. Without doing their due diligence, so this is on them, but still, they're existing property owners, it's going to impact their property value either way. Having that commercial use next to them, so I think the least we could do is just be respectful that there's existing people already there. And so do it from the residential property line.
Okay.
Can you just, just, can you give us an example, like can you kind of describe the difference between the two in a practical scenario?
Absolutely, yeah, I'm gonna pull up a map to show you, to illustrate that a little better.
I'm gonna send a fast text to my husband to tell him when I'll be home, I'm just gonna put that on record, I've been gone all day.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, I know, once in a while. My husband's out of town now.
I know. I know.
I'm publicly declaring, I am not texting anyone. I know, I started thinking about that, I was like, if I do not change the planning date, like in my phone now, there's no way I'm gonna remember.
Yeah, do it right now.
Until I get the text on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone has one minute to put that in their calendar right now, pull out your phone, we're gonna give it a one minute.
So June fifth is six.
I really am doing that.
June fifth at six o'clock.
I wasn't gonna touch my phone.
Oh, absolutely not, my husband tried calling, you tried texting.
Where are you?
I know.
I didn't text, she texted.
Okay.
Can I, can I pile on this with a thought, or do you want me to wait?
Let's just stay with the, the course and address the question and then we'll just hold that for a minute. Okay, here's an example of where this could be happening, okay? So, uh, it's kind of interesting zoning around this area, this is the premier storage yard right here, okay? Um, out front, they have, there's a home, um, and then on the sides, there, there's homes as well, these homes. Are actually in the residential half zone, it's not a commercial zone there, but for most of the corridor, it's commercial zoning on the frontage, okay? So like this is a commercial zone, but they're using it as a residential property right now, uh, and there's a. There's a development that's planned here, this is the Wolf Creek, or Wolf Creek Junction project, formerly known as Blind Rabbit. They're doing some commercial work here, but as you can see, they've got an existing neighbor really close by. So this is the kind of situation we're looking at, and then a zone here, it's very impacted by the storage units. This is a zone, residential zone, and more often than not, what it looks like on the corridors. Like all the front is zone commercial and then behind that is the residential zone.
So going back up to the top, the first example up there.
Yeah.
So can you just describe the situation where, let's say that, um, just using the house, there's a house that's in the commercial zone.
Yep.
But then there's the one below that's in a residential zone.
Right.
So let's say there's the house, the property above that's in the commercial zone, let's say that they decided they're gonna knock that down and build whatever they're gonna build.
Yep.
So in scenario A, it is, are we basing our buffer on zones? Scenario B is basing it on the distance from residents, so what's the practical effect of that property and then there are houses to the south between the two options?
Yep, okay, so this one, this is really where it demonstrates it is, okay, what, pretend we had a brand new project coming here. And they wanna do a high impact use, a gas station, just very hypothetical, so do we want this existing resident to have protections? Buffer protections, um, even though they're in the commercial zone. Uh, say that this property actually became the one that is a residential, they sold it, it's becoming the gas station now. I think absolutely this commer, this residential zone would have those buffer protections because we don't anticipate it going to a commercial zone at any time. We think it's gonna stay as residential, so, does that make sense?
So if we said, I'm sorry from August, but if we said we're gonna have buffer protection for a zone, that would definitely take care of. That group that is, you're highlighting there.
Yep, for sure.
But if we said the buffer protection is based upon the distance from a residence, the effect of that is that it's grabbing the houses that are still in the commercial zone.
Exactly, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, got it.
So I think like at a minimum, we wanna protect the zone, the residential zone.
Yes.
But a question I think is, do we want to have buffer treatments for the residences that are existing, but are grandfathered in?
Thank you.
When did, when was the last zone change? Was it with the general plan update a couple of years ago?
No, we haven't had, we've had some smaller, like very, very small zone changes that really didn't affect too much. In the last few years, but we haven't had a major zone change in a long time. The biggest zone change that happened most recently was creating the city center zone, and that was about six years ago.
So, a lot of these houses on SR thirty-two were built back in the nineteen hundreds.
Absolutely, most of, yeah, I think almost, they probably all were, because this has been commercial zoning on the front of thirty-two for, I believe at least twenty years.
Okay, so if the zoning was implemented after these houses were built. This is, this is what, this is why I view it the way I do, is these homeowners built or they bought with no anticipation of. This ag land being a gas station one day, and so to protect those existing homeowners, especially. Since we're having this discussion here and it's on record, I think it would look really bad. For anybody to ever come back and say, oh, they discussed this, they decided they didn't want to protect us.
Can I offer a, a counterpoint?
Absolutely.
The counterpoint I would say is that that has already happened seven years ago or whatever, when they went through, the council went through. And not only did exactly what you're saying, but actually said all your houses are now eligible to have exactly that. Like your house is a house today, but based upon this rezone right next to your literal house, you could have a hotel or whatever, right? So the, it seems like absent protections that were put in place at the time, right, that that is already, it's already occurred. The council's direction at the time was that there not be that protection in place, because if that protection is in place. Then it would actually inhibit the ability of multiple property owners in the commercial zone to do whatever it is that. They're otherwise allowed to do based upon the, the use table, right? So, cause a lot of those, if I'm not mistaken, are relatively small parcels, so if you said you need to be a certain distance. From whatever for a buffer zone, right, especially when you go, like, I mean, look at the, is it yellow that's. Can you just maybe find, see, like, I can't tell which is which in terms of zoning, you're on the parcel maps, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, let me pull up the zoning map.
But does, does that make sense, like if we have a relatively small parcel, next door is another small parcel, we're both in commercial?
So, but buffered, buffering doesn't necessarily have to mean distance, right?
Okay.
So we can do buffers as in fence height, we can do it in landscaping, we can also do it in distance. So for residential zones, we say it has to have a greater distance, for residential property lines, we could say. It still has, if, if it's abutting a residential property line, not a zone, but residential property zone, we could still say it still needs to have a taller fence. It still needs to have more mature landscaping in place, so, eh, and I would still be in favor of not like a, a giant distance. But still a greater distance than, um, commercial neighbors would need to have.
Can I, can I answer one question really fast, cause I'm, as I'm weighing in these options, this is like plaguing my mind and I feel like I need clarification before I can move forward. What percentage, it, it seems like almost all of our commercial is currently occupied by residential, so as we're imposing these. Distance buffers specifically, I'm, I'm, the landscaping buffers is, I'm, as you know, an advocate for, in a lot of ways, I, I've been a proponent of that in major developments. It's like, what is the percentage here, because I think what I, what my fear is, to Scott's point, is we've already made this change, like that. I agree with a hundred percent, has already, like, that has already been enacted and absorbed and some of those protections eroded, whether we agree with those or not, they have been. So now it's like, how do we continue to responsibly grow and encourage commercial growth, which is needed to sustain a city? But still be respectful, so like, we're kind of back to the argument with the Best Western, which we've all hashed out a million times in public. We're kind of back to that same argument, it's like, okay, we built the residential first, but this was zone commercial, now we're gonna inhibit the development of commercial because. They built the houses first.
Yeah, I don't see it necessarily as the inhibition of commercial, I see it as. So a lot of these homes, they're either older, they're smaller, or, so the people built them, right? Let's say scenario one, the people built them, they're still living in the homes, they never anticipated it would change, they're likely not civically involved, they're not coming to planning commissions paying attention to when the property is rezoned. Even if they're getting the letters, they're tossing it.
Sure.
Right, and so then for the outcome, we just say, yeah, well, it was rezoned, sell your house and move. This is the house they, they built, they raised their kids in, they've got fond memories, two, these houses are older, they're smaller. These are gonna be the most economical and affordable houses for, for new families to buy, and so, again, due diligence, the property's been rezoned. But it's still a younger family, they wanted to move up here, say they've got family here or something, and then this, this is built. I, I don't, and maybe Katie can look into this and we're still not giving you a straight answer, but maybe Katie can look into like, okay, here's what a hundred feet would look like for these properties. They're actually all larger properties because they're attached to ag land, and so if they are abutting residential property lines. Then we could implement like a hundred yard buffer or a hundred foot buffer and it would have a minimal impact on the land dis, on like the property. And what they could do with the property, they could put X, Y, Z over there instead, um, of the building looking into the hull or, you know, so I think.
So just, I, I did put up there about a hundred feet.
Okay.
Um, a hundred feet is pretty significant, that's what we require for a lot, uh, most of where you live in a residential half or cottage zone. You usually have to have a hundred feet on a street, like to the front of your lot, so it's, it's about the size of a lot, a little smaller in some cases, but. Like the front of your lot where you live, it's probably about that same size, a hundred feet.
So one question I have, so when we're, so we're talking about all these buffers in abstract, what does the code say that the buffers have to be right now?
Well, that's the problem, it's, this is, comes back to that code that said that commercial has to be away from.
Right.
So we're trying to tie down what that means and where it applies.
So I guess one other point of clarification, so I, I feel like I'm circling back to what Scott was getting at. In this scenario with this hundred foot, it really, like if you drew it on the other end of the lot, the south end of the lot.
Yeah, I just did that.
No, I know you're good, but if you drew it on the south end of the lot, essentially like, bad example, but you could build a gas station where the house is and you'd still have a hundred feet, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, depending on how you define, even where on the parcel, I mean, that was part of the argument before, is the parking lot included, all that?
Yeah.
They built a gas station there and even if the pumps are on the north end like the house is.
Right.
The argument would be made that the, the area that's disturbed is well within a hundred feet, so, yeah, that area then.
Yeah.
To use this as an example, yeah, zone for a bunch of stuff, but if we had a hundred foot rule, you can't use it for all these different things because of this house.
Right, and that's, I guess that's my fear, I, I understand and like your points. I, I do, I, I mean, I think they have validity in terms of protecting the public and the initial and all the, all the, that sort of, that angle to that, I like what you're saying. But I also don't think if you own a commercial lot or invest in a commercial lot, or you wanna develop a commercial lot. That we wanna be so stringent that we've basically handcuffed this out of, and so I guess the problem that I'm struggling with is. Where, where lies the middle ground to this?
Yeah, and I, I'll bring back that we are planning on this tiered system, so.
Right.
The higher impact uses will have the highest buffer length, like distance, and the lower impacts will be less, so I think, you know, we do have a lot to get through tonight. Um, I don't know that we have to have everything ironed out yet, we're gonna, this will come back, this definitely helps me, gives me some direction. If I can just get each of you to kind of, I think we've had a good discussion here, if I can get your position on this and what you think a reasonable buffer would be. So give me like, I think it should be to the property or to the zone and then a number for the highest tier, like the highest, highest, then that gives me some direction.
Can I ask about the buffer setbacks in residential? Like we don't have any numbers here to work with, but there are some setback numbers at least for residential.
Yeah. Sure, so residential setbacks, um, have to be at least, and I'll just give you the ones for the residential half zone, which is probably where most of you are at, or. So those have to be thirty feet back from the front of the lot, your house has to be thirty feet back, in the commercial zone, that's normally ten feet, cause we want. Businesses to be able to be more on the frontage, uh, where houses usually have like a front yard. Um, on the sides, twelve feet between your ha, your structure and your property line, and in the back, twenty-five feet. So does that help, some context, okay?
Do you mind if I start and then we can just kind of go with it?
Well, let me ask some quick questions fast.
Sure.
So we're talking about tiers, so what are examples of what would fall in the different tiers, just so that we've got a concept of.
Yeah.
Maybe just the highest, since that's what she's asking.
Yeah, anything that is gonna be open between the hours of eleven PM and seven AM, not the whole time, but even if they were open till midnight, they would fall under this highest tier. And so that would include gas stations, um.
Hotels.
Potentially bars or restaurants, um, hotels, which would look like they're not gonna be in the code anymore. And then any, like certain businesses that, like we were talking about doing a square footage, so I think anything that was on the larger side of what we would allow, which was twenty thousand square feet. Those would have fallen the higher tier as well, so, uh, but then the smaller they are, then the less buffer treatment we would require. Or the hours, they're more in the daytime and not getting into that night, like the twenty-four hour business, then that's the lower impact.
So are we talking a distance to the building or a distance to the parking lot?
That's another good question, because before we talked about including parking in that as well, so if we're including parking, then. Uh, do you guys wanna talk parking or do you wanna talk buildings?
I think, I agree with you that we've had a good discussion and I'm open to hearing Scott's opinion and then just going through each of us.
Yeah, I was just gonna pitch some stuff and then you guys just.
And I think, yeah.
And then we can just kind of consensus build from that, yeah. And then we can just kind of consensus build from that, yeah.
So, one other thought bef- while I talked about the parking, I think this might come up later, I can't remember, but, I think the parking could make sense for a twenty-four hour business, but maybe not for a business that's not twenty-four hours.
Can't be, for a baby.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fair. But anyway, thoughts on that are welcome too, so.
Are you covered?
Yeah.
Okay. So, here's my thought, is, um, first of all, I think we probably have some agreement here, that when it comes to buffers that aren't distance, there's good support for that all around.
Mm-hmm.
Is that fair to say when it comes to the?
I think we all agree on that, yeah.
Screening and vegetation and things of that nature, that's not really what we're worried about. But, I like the idea that it is more significant for high impact versus low, so however that was structured.
Right.
But I'll just say that for high and low, I'm thinking that should follow on for both, right? So then, the the question becomes the other piece, so, my thought is that we focus only on the residential zone.
Okay.
Not any residence, but only residential zones. And then, that we utilize the current residential setbacks on the sides, right? And have low impact be the same as residential, so I think you said twelve feet, from the property line.
Okay. So you're twelve feet from the property line to a commercial?
And then include parking, so what that would mean then is twelve feet includes parking lot and all that. So you would know from your property line, you've got twelve feet for low impact, and then just double it for high impact.
So twelve to like twenty-five, depending on the impact.
Yeah, whatever number that looks like.
To the parking?
To parking, so when it comes to the high impact use, so if you're the, if, can we go back to the houses that were, um, just to the south of this?
Yeah. Yep, yep, let me just click out of that.
And I, I definitely appreciate all the thoughts towards the folks that are finding themselves in commercial today, but in a residence, right? But I also think, I'm concerned with the idea of of chilling development that's possible and was put in place by council at the time, right? By creating a bunch of complex measurements that have to occur versus only like this. So that's residential, where it says Francis right there, those four houses just below fourteen seventy-nine. So then that would mean that from the, that southern property line for that upper parcel, fourteen nineteen, if they wanted to put in a gas station, like you said, twenty-five feet before they could even have parking.
Yeah, so like, right up here.
But if it's, yeah, but if it's low impact, whatever that is, then it would be half that figure before they could start their parking. And then, the parking then would create a situation where the building itself has to be even further for fire access and everything else, so.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
So, and I think that, I think that covers it, parking, yep, I think that's good, so, just thrown out there, we'll see what you guys think.
Thank you. Okay, great, Rich, what are your thoughts?
So I, I think I'd go a little bit different, I'd want to measure from residential property lines, because, while I worry a little bit about chilling development in the commercial, I I think one of my big takeaways from the past couple months is, I don't know that I necessarily agree with decisions that were made seven years ago. And while things are zoned commercial, I don't think, especially, you know, to McKenna's points, a lot of these homes, they're older homes, they're smaller homes, and a lot of them are the people that kind of founded and developed this valley. And it just, I think, there is something to be said for people who get pushed out of their kind of family homes because people came in and had more political power than they did. And so I think we we want to protect those people. And eventually, you know, I think we're not looking at everything developing in the next two or three years, I think as time happens, people will sell and move out, and it'll take its natural course, but I think in the interim, we need to do something for those people. And so I think we should measure from property lines.
Okay.
Um, and I would, I I agree with everything you said about landscape buffers, and I think the twelve foot from parking sounds good for low impact uses, for high impact, I'd probably push it up to fifty feet though.
Okay, thank you, that's great.
Yeah, I think, I'm not opposed to what Scott has has sort of suggested, I think that falls sort of more middle of the road. Um, as I think about it, and I don't wanna like completely turn the whole conversation up on its head, it seems easier to me in in those medium grade ones, when we're not talking about a hotel or twenty-four hour impact business, seems easier to me to to allocate, and this is probably just how my brain works, distance from from residential house to commercial building. I think that, that seems more linear to me.
From the physical structure.
From the physical structure, so I, yeah, and I'm thinking like Best Western, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, he's like, that's gonna stare right into my bathroom, I'm like, well, okay, but that's three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Or whatever the case may be. So for me, I think that's where, that's gonna encourage the lot to be developed in a way that, that's gonna create max buffer, whatever that that is. Um, and then I think the other consideration is, perhaps, and Katie, I really am not trying to make you the difficult one here, but perhaps we go percentage of lot as opposed, or some sort of thing like that to accommodate the difference in sizes of lot, right? So, you have a tiny lot, maybe it's twenty-five percent away from, uh, whatever. Um, so, worth formulating and thinking about, but I obviously am in the minority on this one, so as you go through it, like, I guess just give that some mulling around.
Yeah. So I'll just point out here too, that the, these are on the, um, residential zone, they're in a residential zone, but you're saying you would like to go to the house, so in this case, the buffer would be like?
Well, yeah, let's just use the house on the top left, and we'll just use Best Western, cause we all know it. I'm pretty sure it is the Teakwood House on the, the second from the left from SR thirty-two.
This one? This one here?
Up a little more, nope, other end, there you go, yes.
This one? Okay.
So with the hotel being built in the middle, and I don't know what the distance is, uh, we can make the number up, it doesn't really matter, but.
Yeah, I think it was like, yeah, these were pretty far, right?
Yeah, this is like five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet, yep.
So, obviously, we can't, we, if we created a hundred foot rule, then in theory, they could build right where the berm is, right? Like, we all drive by it. So that's why I'm saying like, is it, is it more advantageous to look at a percentage of lot away from the nearest house, or something along those lines? Because I do think it does matter, Best Western is getting built in the middle and not right on top of the house. And so I guess that's my, that's my thought when I think about this, is like, I I under, I mean, I understand the arguments, I just think like, measuring house to house is cleaner, and then, and then some factoring in something to protect the smaller commercial zones lots.
So structure to structure would be your.
Yeah, cause what if, I'm gonna make this example, what if you have a, you know, a hundred by fifty commercial lot somewhere along this line? And I have no idea if that exists, but then you make a hundred foot rule, again, I think like that just kind of makes it harder. And I, I don't know what the solution is, so sorry, I probably just made this more muddy than it needs to be.
Not necessarily, but I think that's good. Anyone else?
But, to our conversation we had last meeting, is, in those instances, they can come and petition the city council to make an exception for that. They can say, hey, this doesn't fit within the code, but we would like to build this here, would you make an exception for that? That's, that's possible, correct Katie?
Conditional use permits.
No, same, changing the code.
Exemptions?
Like, changing the, so are you talking about a variance?
Yeah.
So those are, I would, you know, caution against anything with a variance, those are super, super hard to come by, and you talk, you have to meet certain requirements, like having, um.
Well, and I think he's talking about even more about just legislative changing the code, right? I mean, if it's really important to him, they could come back and change it, uh, uh, cause I mean, that's just where we were landing lots of times last time is.
Right.
We.
They'd have to come back and like, probably change the code and not just be for them.
The residential use or the commercial use?
Commercial, the commercial.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so to bring it up to speed, so last time, as we were looking at some of the conditional uses, the thought was, instead of having them be conditional uses, we should move them to prohibited uses. And then if people really want that use, they can come back and change the code.
Gotcha.
But because, by saying no, we're giving, we're protecting the city, by giving people the ability to still to change it, whereas if we leave it conditional, the city can't do anything really.
Got it.
Ah, okay.
I see what you're saying.
I, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and to go along.
So like, they have to petition for a a zoning or an ordinance change?
Or in some cases, a zone change, so we've talked, talked about putting certain uses as allowed in Ag two, but Ag two is pretty limited in Francis, so if they wanted them, they'd have to like, change the zone to Ag two. So mostly would apply to these things like that were Ag one, we'll get into that in a minute.
I like that.
Okay.
I, I really like Justin's, um, suggestion, actually. I, it kind of, I was going to suggest, like, kind of a compromise, that we do it like discounted from the property line, so if there's a hundred foot buffer from the residential zone, I'm really bad with distances, so I'm just throwing out numbers here, but, so say there's a hundred foot buffer from the residential zone, we discount it if it is a residential lot located within a commercial zone. So then we would say, okay, if it is this situation and it's this tiered use, it's discounted by twenty feet. Or it's just discounted by twenty feet altogether for whatever use. So if one, so if the, the top tier is like a hundred feet buffer, and the tier two is a fifty foot buffer, and the tier one is a twelve foot buffer, then, I don't know.
Can I, can I just ask for one point of clarification? So you're saying that a residential lot in a, a residential house in a commercial lot?
In a commercial zone.
In a commercial zone, thanks, uh, would be, would it, would have less restrictions than a permanently zoned?
That.
That you would give more of, more leeway because it is adjacent to a commercial zone?
That, because it's in a commercial zone.
Yeah.
So then, that way, the commercial zone, and I don't know if I'm ex- expressing myself clearly enough, so.
So you're, you're essentially giving credits to homeowners within the commercial zone for the developer of the commercial property. If you're in that zone.
So, here's my paper.
I love it.
So say, here's the undeveloped Ag lot, here is the existing home lot. So, the developer wants to develop within here, and then, we had those residential houses here. This is your residential zone, right? So this is the residential zone. This is your, this is your resident property within the commercial zone. So, they have to, in order to develop this, they have to be a hundred feet away from this property, from these res- from the residential zone. And then they also still have to be minus twenty feet from the property owner, so only eighty feet, so they could develop the site eighty feet.
I actually really like what she's saying, I think that's a good middle way to do that, whatever.
So let me propose some language here, just speaking off, so, it would say something like this, um, it would be under the buffer section, and it would say, like, commercial use, we're talking like a high, a top tier use. Um, the parking must be a minimum, uh, of the, the facility, and we'll include parking in that, must be a minimum of a hundred feet to a residential zone, or eighty feet to an existing residential home.
Yeah, maybe no closer than.
No closer than eighty feet to, that's, that's kind of the, what you're thinking.
So to an existing residential home or residential property line?
Yeah.
Right, residential zone, or, and then residential property line or residential structure, what are you thinking?
I like property line.
Yeah.
I, I, so, and I actually like, I think, maybe more, if we could quantify it more, what Justin was saying with the lot percentages. Um, but, so like, it would have to be twenty-five feet or fourteen feet percent of the lot. I actually really liked that idea as well. Um, but I, I would stand for property line, just because, yes, that's the person's home, but especially with the state, um, releasing restrictions around, um, accessory dwelling units or external A- ADUs, I think, and and trying to increase housing affordability with secondary structures on it, on a property, I think that they could likely build a shed or a garage, or maybe they just wanna put a fire pit in the corner of their property, and they don't wanna be right next to the commercial property, and yet, that's how we've measured it. So I think their use is their entire property.
Sure.
But, yeah, I do see where there are some properties that have Ag all around them, and how that would limit it.
Right, so, and Ags, it, we'll, we'll talk about Ag in a minute, so is anyone, Scott or Rich, or Justin, I guess, do either of you wanna jump on the hybrid that, I'm gonna call what McKenna said, the hybrid bandwagon. Does anyone wanna jump on the hybrid, on the hybrid method here, or do you wanna stick with where you're at?
I, I'm in favor of the hybrid.
Okay.
But I would caution the percentage. Cause people can get creative with percentages, oh, I moved it to this corner, so that it took my percentage down on this opposite corner. People can get creative with percentages.
The other tricky part about using the residence as a distance to measure from is then you invite the question of where on the residence.
Yeah. I personally like the property line myself, just because it's cleaner with, it's how we do things. And I think they do have the right to use their entire property, so I guess I would lean in that direction.
No, I agree, and I'd be fine with jumping on, but I don't know how we do the percent, and I think, to Trevor's point, I think that would invite games. And so I'd rather just have some number.
A distance.
Yeah, but I think in hybrid works, I think that's really simple.
Okay, so, um, so it looks like Rich and McKenna and Trevor are wanting the hybrid. Scott, are you gonna stay with where you're, where you're filling out the zone?
I think the hybrid sounds good if, and if it was the property line, but also I think if the numbers were a lot smaller, then maybe what you're envisioning.
I have no envisioning of distance.
So you're not gonna throw a number out?
I am relying on Katie to tell us good distances, so.
If it was like fifty, forty, and maybe twelve.
Yeah, so we talked about like some of the numbers early on, I think the fifty feet is about the max that I would envision, right?
Okay.
From the property line. Um, but if you get into like a hundred feet, three hundred feet, and five, all that, we would take out almost all those lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just really far, and so, I think if the numbers were smaller, then I think it would work. Um, and it would land some protection for the folks that are living in residences that are in commercial.
But not as much as a bo- above buffer.
Yeah.
So I feel like it's, yeah.
It's a balance.
Yeah, it's the hybrid.
I'm on board with it, and I'm not tied to structure versus, uh, versus lot. I just wanna be careful that we don't, we don't cast a pebble to make a ripple that turns into a tsunami on us. That's my fear with, with doing some of these things, is that we, we, we attempt to protect the residence, which is the right thing to do to care for your neighbor, that, but we also like absolutely cripple the possibility of any sort of development, because that's ultimately not, we need to be down the middle.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna throw out there, I'm just gonna bring this up earlier with the str- with the scheduling issue. But, um, this is a really big Code text amendment.
Yeah.
And it's a lot, and we're, we're not gonna get it all right the first time. So I think what we need to shoot for, just to be in a good pla- better place, six, you know, six months later, is this eighty-twenty principle, are you guys familiar with the eighty-twenty idea? So, I think we can get eighty percent of the most important changes done in this time. We might not get to a hundred, and we don't have the time to get to a hundred, but I think our goal should be to get to eighty and have something that's better than what we had before, and then we can see how it works, and we can make adjustments later. But, okay. All right, so, what I'm pl- what I'm hearing is that we might not all be agreeing on the distances, Trevor, what are you, what are you thinking on distances?
Um, well, one thing popped into my head, that's, again, back to my question of the structure or the parking lot, but if we do a twenty-five or twelve, or wha- whatever distance it may be, in, in my mind, it'd be better for the parking lot to go up to a fence buffer or a landscape buffer. So then we don't have all this natural grass out there just collecting garbage, because, commercial properties collect garbage, and it just goes out into that grass, and nobody picks it up, cause it just sits in the grass. So for me, I'm like, I would almost rather see the parking lot go up to the landscape buffer, and then have this be from the resident property line to the structure.
So, um, I think that's a good one, just to give everyone a little perspective, the landscaping buffer on the Best Western Hotel was about twenty-five to thirty feet, so that's the berm.
And I think we would require it to be a landscaped buffer, because I agree.
No, we don't want open weeds.
Yeah, I was envisioning this as a landscaped buffer, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. And I, also, I never touched on it, but I do like Scott's approach of viewing the parking lot with the structure, just because there's gonna be lights going into the property and different things like that on a parking lot, so.
Sounds like that's the direction we're headed, is including the parking in that buffer, and then, you have, so you're thinking more of Scott's numbers, like the twenty-five-ish?
I think.
I think here, I think between thirty and fifty feet is appropriate.
Thirty to fifty?
Lower, high impact, which.
Fifty, I believe, would be high impact.
And then we were thinking somewhere between twelve and, I think twenty-four, twenty-five, something like that for low.
So your, your high impact would be the fifty, that's the number I'm kind of the most wanting to get nailed down a little bit, would be fifty for you. McKenna, you're not quite sure.
I just need to see visuals.
Gotcha.
Sorry.
So, so to put it in context, so a super soaker shoots forty feet.
What is a super soaker?
Squirt guns from the nineties, the really high power ones, so a squirt gun shoots forty feet.
I mean, this room is probably.
Say it for the, say it for the recording.
Yeah, it's probably this room.
This room is forty feet?
I, that's, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, yep, I like forty feet buffers.
Can I ask an associated, as a side question real quick? I'm just curious, do we allow, do we permit, do we issue building permits for improvements on residences? That are on commercially zoned lots today?
No, uh, because, well, certain ones we might, uh, but anything structural, we would not.
Because?
Because it's legal non-conforming, so the state code says that.
It's just more of the same, like, I feel for them, but they're also locked in.
We're trying not to extend too much.
Wanting to essentially say, okay, sorry, you built this house by another house. That's now one point two million.
No, it's, it's the literal reality that today, right now, they are in that zone. That hasn't, the only thing that hasn't happened is that a adjacent property owner hasn't chosen yet to exercise those rights. But it's al- it's already done.
That's the state law, and we follow that one.
That's, well, that's what I was just bringing that to bear, this idea that there is a very, there's a difference between the residence or these own lots. And homes that are in the, the commercial zone.
Yep, okay, um, Justin, you didn't give me a number, what are you thinking as far as distance?
Um, my concern would be, could we do some sort of, you're gonna hate me again, uh, determination of. Even, even give me an average frontage on S R thirty-two, so that we can make a reasonable.
Man, I don't know, that's.
I don't need this right now, but I think like when you do this, like.
Yeah.
Can you, can you go to the lot map and then just?
I, that would be a lot of work to find the average of all these different properties and, I don't know.
But do you see where I'm going with this, that's, that's my problem, how do we? How do we, well, how do we give a number, so just for kicks and giggles, she's, her mouse is over a giant lot. I don't even know what that lot is, but let's just say it's commercial.
Yeah.
It is commercial, this is commercial.
Why the percentage makes sense.
So, 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 uh, fifty foot sat back here is no big deal, there's, there's probably what, four hundred feet there? Oh, way more than that, seven hundred feet there, so fifty foot doesn't matter, now go across the street for one oh one.
That's like fourteen super soakers.
Exactly, you know, for whatever that is, right across the street, up, no, up, 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 up. It includes frontier way, like, or frontier lane, like.
This one.
So now we're saying fifty feet, well, that's twenty-five percent of.
Their lot.
That person's lot, so this is where I'm struggling with giving you a number, because I don't want. I, and I'm not saying a high impact should go in a tiny lot, and that's probably not realistic, but that's where I'm like, I don't know that.
Can you go north to the, uh, vet place?
Houses wanted to make, wanted to rebuild into like a bakery or something, or a commercial, like they wouldn't be.
Not as commercial, that's right next to those houses.
Wait a minute, here it is.
But, but, but I think, cause those are lower uses.
Everybody, let's all do this one at a time.
Thank you.
So I'm just showing that.
We're breaking the rules.
Thank you.
Okay, so what do you wanna measure here?
Scott, finish.
I was just gonna say, this is an example of one that is plopped right next to residential, how did these setbacks work out?
Okay, so do you want me to go to the house, to the building, or the outbuilding?
Well, no, from the property line is mostly what we're discussing, or that distance right there.
The property line.
Yep, so that's about thirty-five-ish feet?
You can see that from the road, the parking lot from the road, that setback is, what, twenty feet probably from Lambert and.
I don't think we'd be.
That was designated for you though.
Yeah, I don't think we'd put any setbacks for the roads, just residential properties.
Right, property, property, okay, I think I got enough to like propose something to you next time, and I think I can, I think I've heard like the consensus. Or we're, we're not all gonna agree exactly, but I think I've got an idea, so.
I think Justin's idea with the percentages is good to work towards.
I'm a little worried about, ah, making sure the code's plain and readable, and that could complicate things, so I'm gonna work with it. And see if I can get language that makes sense, but if not, I might just do a valid flat distance.
Yeah.
Well, and I think going back to, just I understand your concern saying, well, if we have fifty foot setbacks, that eats up that whole piece. But that's just for the high use, right, the high impact use, and the lower impacts, we're talking like ten, twenty feet. And so it's less than these, less than these offsets, and I think then that becomes a lot more manageable even on smaller lots.
Absolutely understood, I just think there's no way for us to calculate every scenario in terms of those setbacks, and I'm again like saying.
They can always come to change.
How can we?
Second lot.
How can we set, how can we set a standard that is fair to both sides? And I think Scott and I come from a very different perspective, where like sometimes life's too bad, like that sucks. And, and it's not that we don't have empathy for those, but like, it's a very linear thought process. And it's just ironic that Scott and I fall in the same bucket, so I just think, uh, something to consider as you're building this language out is like. Find some way down the middle of the road where it's not this excessive, we're gonna protect every nineteen hundreds farmhouse. Because that's just not realistic, and it's not in the best interest of the city, even if it is in the best interest of individual residents. Who happen to now own commercial loans.
Yeah, I think that's the hybrid, I think it does strike a good balance.
And I do think we are saying similar things, we just gotta figure out where the middle of the road is, and to Katie's point. If we continue at this pace of hearing everyone out over and over again, we're never gonna get out of, out of any of this.
So let me just, uh, put pen to paper and bring something back.
Pen to paper.
Yeah.
Deal.
Okay, now, just while we're here talking about this, we have some properties that don't, but a residential zone, they have, but agricultural zone. So the densities are a lot lower, like, for example, um. Like here, this back here is ag, well, actually, it's not even in the city, but it, let's say it was, it was in the city and it's.
We don't care.
We zone it ag two or something, do we have the same buffers that we'd have for the residential, or is that a lower?
The cows don't care.
It's lower.
Lower, okay.
And if it gets developed into residential, they'll know what's there.
What's, what's the setback on that, the storage place right there?
Nothing.
It's like a five B.
Nothing, nothing, because our code right now says to like an existing residence.
Yeah.
We have the same thought.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna work with that, so moving along to, um. The next question, this is for conditional use permit public hearings. Uh, we may wanna keep the C U P process in code for some limited uses, so I'm gonna say that. This won't be popular with anyone, but we are required by the state to allow for sexual, sexually oriented businesses in our code. We have to have a zone that allows them, the only place that we allow that is in the light industrial zone in Francis, so.
City center.
Rich has a business plan.
The one we want instead of a restaurant.
Right, so of course, like.
They serve food.
Yeah.
Blinking red light.
Alright, alright, hold on, focus, guardrails and professionalism.
Okay, so this is the only place in the city we allow it, but I think it makes sense to keep it as a conditional use, because then we can look at site specific things. I don't think we can eliminate all the conditional uses, I think certain uses are gonna have to just be conditional, like the sexually oriented businesses, okay? So, what?
Do we, are, are we saying a strip club, like?
Yes.
I've never heard it phrased that.
There could be a lot of things.
Only in the, that light industrial, and also.
Just in the purple.
Within twenty-five hundred feet of a city park.
Is that in state code, or is that?
No, I just made it up, but I think that'll cover it, cause then the only place it could be is in that gully down there.
You guys, this could be a really big moneymaker and it might be what's best for the city, so stop squashing developers.
This, right, is this residential cottage, these two, what's?
The brown is cottage.
What's this one over here?
That's called Francis Cove, and you've had the privilege of not being involved in that yet.
I was gonna say, it only can be in that one, residential cottage, if it wasn't on this.
Is that the one Rusty just bought behind the counter?
It's the old church.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
There's an old church?
Well, there was, it's gone now.
Oh, you didn't know?
Parking lot.
Bummer.
Moving.
Okay.
Okay.
My husband grew up here in Marion, isn't it?
That's right.
So anyway, that being said, we have, I think we need to keep conditional uses, um, I was at this conference last week. They strongly, strongly encourage that we don't hold public hearings for conditional uses, because, and we've talked about this, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on it. But as we know, we get a lot of angry people, and there's not a whole lot we can do. But we did talk about last time that it is hopeful to have some comments, because actually we did get some good feedback from the public. So, do we keep public hearings against the advice of the, like, the League of Cities and Towns? Or do, and we talked about doing this impact survey, but then there's the concern about, like, the staff time to do that and to send out a survey.
Okay, Scott, go.
Is it possible to have, first of all?
Give your opinion, not a question.
Well, no, I just wanna know if we can do a public comment as part of order.
Well, that's what we're, that's exactly what we're talking about, do we have?
General public comment, meaning that if there was applications that are coming through, they're visible to the public. And we just tell them every time, look on the website, whatever's happening, and it's just administrative. But there's also a public comment period for five minutes or ten minutes or whatever, at the beginning of every planning commission meeting. And you're welcome to show up and say whatever you wanna say about whichever one.
We could, uh, we haven't done that in the past, but.
The other option is nothing, right, we could do that.
I'll go in order.
Okay.
Uh, cause I think it's important you finish, but I'll get to my point.
All I was gonna say is if there's a way to keep open some kind of public comment without going against the recommendation of the league, right? Uh, this idea of, cause it's not just us, I've seen this everywhere, a lot of different jurisdictions are looking at making this move. It seems like keeping some kind of public comment involved would be useful, and it, I don't know that it makes sense to have that happen at council. Where they have nothing to do with it at all.
It's just a general public comment period at the beginning of every planning commission meeting.
So, that's.
I'm gonna call that the hybrid method.
So, I think we should have as few C U Ps as possible, and I think for them, we wanna have public hearings. Because I prefer having a public hearing than a protest outside the building.
Or both.
And, yeah, and, and I think it's cathartic for the public to be able to come, and even if they know that we can't do anything, and even, even. If it's just educational, we were able to through the process educate people, move people along, the comments got less angry over time and more constructive. And like, it wasn't pleasant, I didn't like it, but I think it was good to go through, and I think if, if we're gonna have conditional use permits. I, like I said, I'd rather have comments than protests.
Okay, so, so Rich, somebody proposes a strip club in the light industrial zone, you're, you're ready for that?
Yep.
I can't even wait.
Yep.
Okay.
I rest, you rest your case.
I rest my case.
We'll find some fun way to say like, that's it, uh, I am, I am in line with Rich. I do not want to create a, a standard that is a open blank check public comment. Um, I think that, uh, public hearing attached to a C U P for a specific reason. Um, a- and I think we have worked hard to, to split those up and limit those. Um, I think we will always have an educational role, um, whoever is sitting in the center of this table is gonna have that educational role, like. And we can beg and plead and scream, like, please give me relevant actionable feedback, and we may or may not receive that, and that's okay. Um, and then we may have, you know, some tangents that go wildly off course during that, that we, we can't shut down in the two minutes. But I, I would much rather keep it attached to a conditional permit type of scenario than a general.
And you.
Open comment.
Do you want, so you, and there's also the option of just not having a public.
I, I do, I don't think that's good, I, I think, I think I'm in line, like, then now we're gonna have pickets out there, and it's, it, it just sends the wrong message. Even if I have to, even if as a, as a legislative body, we have to listen to, you know, forty comments. That aren't relevant to get the two that are, have some actionable items in them, I think it's, I think it's important. And that would be my stance, I just, I'm, I'm very leery and have been cautioned in the past about opening up any sort of.
Like general public comment.
General public comment that isn't focused and targeted on actionable things that we can guardrail.
And the city council does have a public comment, so if there are concerned citizens, that's probably the right, in some cases, the right avenue of people that can actually address that, those issues.
Can I ask just a question?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, with respect to the list that's just learned, um. The comment on there says something along the lines of, we may want to have some conditional use permits.
Mm-hmm.
The guidance in this prior discussion was, hey, get rid of all of them, was the recommendation, don't have any.
I, I heard different things, but when, when you, when you put pen to paper, there was some like, ooh, the sexually oriented business, we might wanna have that be.
So that's just implying of that there is this, this reduction in.
Definitely a big reduction.
Right?
Huge reduction.
Okay, so then what things would be on the list then becomes the next?
We'll get to that, not today, but definitely the S O Bs are at the top of that list.
Yeah, but I wonder if a hotel.
I think the hotel was gonna be prohibited, and if they wanted to change the code, they could ask for that, but we have to, by state law, have the S O Bs on there.
Oh, yeah, it has to be a conditional use, right?
No, we could just allow it, it has to be allowed kind of somewhere, it has to be permitted somewhere in the city.
Do the measurement myself, if I can have it be no more than, and then just put the park in there, then it'd be.
Yeah, and we'll have very strict, like, objective standards, we'll have very objective standards. Far from parks, twenty-five hundred feet from the park.
Okay, um, so this is gonna be really ironic considering who I work for. Um, but I would agree with Rich and Justin.
Okay.
Uh. I, um, so I agree, I think that we need to allow the public to speak. I think the consensus building, um, process is, is better when we're combined. Than we're, when we're apart, even if there are negative opinions and voices. I, I think back to the mustachioed gentleman who, um, suggested the architectural features with the building heights. And I loved that suggestion, like, that was life-changing for me, and so I, I think that it's just great to have the public comment. So, yeah, I would, um, be in favor of keeping the public hearings, and then I would also, I really like what Trevor said earlier in the meeting. When he said we just, like, put everything as a not permitted use essentially. Um, and then have them apply for zoning changes, so I think that that is a great way to go. And a way to keep hopefully our citizenry happier, um, while still. Yeah, keeping a tight finger on it.
Trevor?
I'm on board with limiting the C U Ps and allowing public hearings.
Okay, perfect, alright, next one.
Katie's gonna, Katie, you're gonna remind us all of that the next time there's like pitchforks and signs, right?
Like, you guys, I'll say four out of five of you.
I'm guilty of breaking code, go ahead, let's do it, next one.
So for the process for a commercial development, um, this is something I heard from the conference I was at last week. Is that the state is very, very likely to require that site plans only, can't go to city council anymore. So like when we have a commercial development site plan come in, we're probably gonna be looking at a law that says that we can't go to council. It's gonna be similar to what they did with subdivisions, whereas everyone on board would just preemptively, making the decision that site plans are not going to city council. Since administrative item, kinda like what just Jeremy was talking about, that. That doesn't go to the council, it's just a planning commission decision, like, commercial development, you guys will approve commercial developments. If they meet the code, you're gonna be in charge of it now, and it doesn't go to council. Cause I think the state's gonna do it anyway, so we can either take care of it now, while we're doing this, or we can wait and see if they do. Either one, we could do that, but.
Trevor, vote which way?
I, I would prefer we let the state make that decision and allow more eyes to be on a project. While we can.
I concur.
I concur.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree also.
Sure.
Okay, alright, that's, we're getting a lot faster on these. Okay, so we're gonna keep city council involved for the time being. Okay. Building height, um, direction seemed to be to keep the commercial height at forty feet and city center at thirty-fourty-five. But measure of the natural, from the natural grade instead of the finished gr- But, measure of the natural, from the natural grade instead of the finished grade, is that, is that actually the consensus? That was my feeling from it, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure, so.
Yes.
Yes, with the additional language that they're for key architectural features.
Yeah, we'll get to that in the next bullet point, but, okay, noted, yep?
Uh, I, I'm fine with the height requirements, but I'm a fan of the finished grade.
You like finished grade?
I do like finished grade, 'cause I do think that our valley has some leveling issues. And I think when we start mitigating that, that then we, we run into the, you know, flooding scenario we saw at Premier Pet and some of those other things. And I just think, like, we're, we're setting the height requirements, we've made it pretty public how we feel about four stories. I'm pretty sure that was echoed in both legislative bodies, so I think we should avoid going back to natural grade and try and get everything level to the street level.
Okay, thank you.
That's my opinion.
Yep.
And, and I think going back, I think what I was go pointing out last time is that we want things, especially in the C-one, to be closer to residential heights. So they're not towering over.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think I would've been more inclined to lower that to something closer to thirty, 'cause I think thirty-two is the max for residential.
It is, yep.
And so I think I would've been inclined to lower it to thirty-two.
Okay.
And, so right now, do, do we allow residential to backfill? To bring up to road level?
Yeah, they can, so-
But, but then we measure from natural-
But we measure from natural grade.
Yeah, I think we need to just have consistent measuring, so if we're measuring from natural grade and residential, then we should do the same for commercial.
Okay.
And then-
But I also think that there's nowhere in the city where you're gonna have to bring in ten feet of fill, or you can't have a three-story building still.
Sure. Yep.
And if they wanted to go past that forty feet, there's still that architectural element that they could.
Okay, so you're saying, keep it, or go back to natural and lower the height, the max height to maybe thirty-two to thirty-five, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'm just gonna go with the Justin plan.
Okay, so I'm gonna say the Justin plan is keeping things the way they are.
There you go.
Uh, is it currently finished grade?
It is.
Okay, and I'm, I actually, not to, not to-
We'll change the plan.
Not to poke Rich, but I, I think residential should be the same from finished grade.
Okay, I don't see us changing anything on residential too much right now on that, but-
I'm saying if you're, if the argument is consistency-
If it comes up, yeah. Yep, okay, so, so I've got three different, um, viewpoints here. So, Rich is on one end, saying he wants to lower the height and measure from natural grade. The other end of that is Justin and Scott, who wanna keep things the way they are, where we measure from finished grade, and it's forty or forty-five feet. So, McKenna and Justin, it sounds like you wanna keep the heights, but measure from natural grade, is that true?
McKenna and Trevor for the most.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, that's what I have written down, McKenna and Trevor.
And I would just say, I agree, I think that there's some leveling issues throughout the valley. But I actually love that, because I look at places that are more visually interesting. And I think it is more interesting, if it is all three-story buildings with different architectural features, but yet those, like, three stories are still maybe, like, five-foot or ten-foot variances, I think that having that measured from the natural grade is just more visual interest for us, I like it.
Okay, so-
And it keeps them shorter, people will be happy about that.
Okay, so, probably we'll head in the direction of keeping the heights, but going to a natural grade. Because I feel like that's kind of in the middle, and we've got two there, so that's probably the direction I'll head, and we can discuss it more next time.
Nice question.
Yeah.
Question is, is it possible to associate the difference between natural grade and finished grade with water issues? And the need to elevate based upon water table issues, like, hey, I need to be this much higher because of this? Versus, if you don't have those issues, then you have to just do natural grade.
Yeah, so like the pet lodge, they could've, they could've built up, their building is way under the, about height.
Yeah.
They just chose not to. So, but it does get into, okay, if I have to build up for these water issues, then I'm gonna have to lose height. And, and maybe we're good with that, so, it sounds like we are, overall, like, not everybody.
I just don't know what other commercial buildings would come to Francis, Utah, that need three stories.
Other than a hotel?
Other than a hotel, like-
Should write that down, and just see what happens in the year.
Well, yeah, I just-
I think most-
It's like, welcome to planning commission, please don't put that out there.
I will just put out that I can envision that happening, actually, in the city center zone, because we allow the apartments above, above the re, the commercial. So where you have that vertical dwellings, it could ac, definitely happen.
There's also, um, a lot of, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about the need for sports facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Like, uh, South Summit, how they can't get the funding. And lately, I've been spending a lot of time in privately owned, like, sports, there's one in Farmington we keep going to for basketballs.
Yeah.
And it's fantastic, and they're huge in that direction, very tall.
Okay.
But all it is, is just, it's an open warehouse thing with, like, basketball courts and stuff, and so, maybe there's different things that might end up there.
Okay.
Especially the two hotels.
Great.
Traveling teams gotta stay somewhere.
Okay, so I'm gonna put some pen to paper on this now, I feel like I've got a direction, we might not all agree, but hopefully we can, we can get there. Or get friends in middle ground. Okay, this is the last question I had, is talking about the architecture in the city center zone. We talked about adding language, limiting any type of habitable or future habitable space above three stories. We're basically trying to avoid the situation where it's like, here's this-
Unfinished attic space.
Yeah, unfinished attic space, right, that could be finished at some point. So, we wanna avoid that, maybe no windows greater than a certain size, like, I don't wanna say you can't have any windows on the top, 'cause if you had-
A turret.
A turret, then a window would be awesome.
Friggin' awesome.
But if it's a window that's big enough for a firefighter to get into habitable space, this is the direction I'm thinking, is like, do we have ideas? And Trevor, maybe your experience in building could give us some ideas of, like, what are some things we could do to limit that above a certain height? So that we can make sure, like, we don't have this attic scenario again.
So out of curiosity, did that application get withdrawn, or what's the story with that application?
That is still to be determined on how that's gonna work out. I have a meeting coming up next week where we're gonna discuss that, so, I will keep you updated, but I don't really have an update right now. So, um, so like you could say, no attics with stair and elevator access, limit to architectural elements above a certain height. Um, and then I have the code down here that I'll scan, I'll scroll to, or limit buildable area above a certain height. Um, a lot of these are things that McKenna and I talked about, so, here's what we currently allow. Uh, we say thirty-two feet in residential, forty in C-one, L, uh, light industrial and public facilities, forty-five in the city center. Um, and then church spires, bell towers, clock towers, cu- cubulas, and like architectural elements on non-residential lots may extend over the specified maximum height, but shall not contain any habitable space above the maximum zero height stated. These elements must be approved as part of the site plan review, and under no circumstances shall be more than fifty feet above grade, unless approved as part of a conditional use permit. So, I'd say number three is the language we're looking at, and what are thoughts on that one?
I'm in agreement with the language that's in there.
Okay.
The current language?
Yeah.
So what you're looking for though, Katie, is it a adjustment to-
To get the attic situation taken care of.
So what would be the numbers? Is there a way to figure out what the numbers would be that takes the language in number three?
Mm-hmm.
And aligns it with only allowing all that stuff in three above a three-story structure?
Right.
Whatever that number is, is possibly the number.
Yeah, so maybe forty feet.
Glenn, what if we also said something, and we could just explicitly say, attics are included as one of your stories? If it's an attic that a person can stand up in and move about freely, it's a story.
Attics over six feet are-
We can't change building code, though.
Well, we could set a definition of a story.
Not, not reluctantly.
Can we? Okay, yeah.
So we could define story and say, any floor, or, including attics that are over six feet tall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's, not, not a bad idea, I like that, I'm writing it down.
I, I like-
Say five, ready for midgets.
There you go.
I like just the provision for number three, like, it allows for architectural features, um, and it still limits them to being, you know, less than fifty feet above.
Mm-hmm.
So, above grade even, so that's fifty feet above grade, and they still have to fall within the forty-five or forty feet.
Yeah.
So I feel like the way that you drafted it, Katie, is-
Well, that's, that's just the way the code is right now.
Oh, that's the way it is?
Mm-hmm.
Then, why did we have contention?
Because they could put the four stories under forty-five feet.
Oh.
Right.
Right.
Right, but if we define story, then maybe that takes care of this.
Gotcha. Okay, perfect.
And maybe that's the easiest way to handle it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, a story is any floor, including attic, um-
And we could even say that has walkable space or so, right?
Yeah, I mean, walkable, it's kind of like, I would just say, put a number to it, like-
Over si- five feet, five feet.
Over five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I think with the building codes, I think-
Or four feet.
You have to have habitable space, it has to be at least six foot, six and a half feet, does, does that sound right to you, Trevor?
Isn't it a stud height, like ninety-six inches or ninety?
Eighteen, eighteen, yeah.
So then I would cut it down, so it couldn't be-
Yeah, 'cause I, I also wouldn't wanna, like, I wouldn't wanna prohibit any utilities going in that room by saying, oh, it can only be three feet tall.
Right.
Okay, now we, now we have construction constraints of not being able to get utilities above that.
Yeah.
Right, not mechanical.
Yeah. Okay.
So five feet?
Yeah.
Who, wait a minute, five feet or eight feet? If eight feet's the restriction for the height, then, I mean, it-
Is that, we're defining a story, correct?
Right, we're defining a story, so the height of a story is anything, including an attic, that's-
Above five.
With a height of-
Well, so here's the, like, here's why I'm not saying five feet. So, I understand where you're going with this, but, like, if you had a commercial use and they're putting in commercial refrigerators or whatever in that space, like, now all of a sudden, cutting that down to five feet or four feet or whatever, now they gotta go on the roof, right? As opposed to in the, in the attic space. So I think as long as you're below the required height to be considered as a pivotal story, which is a stud length, like, eight feet or whatever it is, I think you're fine. It could be seven foot, eleven inches and three quarters if you really wanted to.
But I think part of what I wanna do is I wanna make sure that I don't get a building that looks like a four-story nursing home. And I have somebody tell me it's three stories.
Right.
Or that it even has refrigerators in the fourth story.
Right.
'Cause if, if they wanted to put mechanical units on the roof, you can make a pair of a wall that's big enough to cover those mechanical roofs.
Yeah.
You don't have to in case they're-
A hundred percent agree, I'm just saying, like, if, if we chop this way down, even when our requirement's eight feet,
Yeah.
they still have to beat the forty-five foot.
Here's a thought, I don't know if this, maybe this doesn't make sense, but if you had a, um, say you had an attic that's just open to the roof, right? There's no, so it's just, you have your floor, and then you have the roof above it, which is how I envision most attics, honestly. You have a sloped roof, what if the peak of that is, like, you have a nice slope on it, and then you, we don't wanna discourage that, and-
Yeah, I love slopes. But then, but that would fall under an architectural feature though, too.
Yeah, maybe if we wrote it in that way.
Or we could say, yeah.
Rather than a flat roof, I'm making an architectural pitched roof.
But, but, Glenn, what if we just say attics are included as a story? And just leave it at that, just, any attic is included as a story, so if you want an attic, you lose a story. And people can make that choice.
I don't hate it.
Okay, well, yeah, let me work on that and see how that works out.
I liked, I thought it was quite clever, actually, to just make it an attic.
Yeah.
I really did, I thought it was great.
But if you put that language in there, then it would mean you would beat to two stories.
Right.
They didn't.
They did.
'Cause we only have all three.
If they want an attic.
They did, but, but more importantly, we went to council.
Or a four, and not have an attic.
Yeah.
But-
Yeah.
But then you'd be, ha, end up with a bunch of flat roofs.
Right, and I'm trying to avoid that, too.
Yeah.
Let me talk to my building inspector, 'cause I think this has opened up some other thoughts in my, like, how this is gonna work with a sloped roof and, and with mechanical equipment. Let me talk to the building inspector and see if he has some ideas of how we can tamp down this attic idea. Hmm, I don't know, but I think that was some good comp, like, discussion on it, so, okay. Just writing a note to myself here. All right, the next thing I wanted to cover is short-term rentals, I thought maybe we could knock out that portion of it. Um, I made some changes to the code, so, not a conditional use, applicant needs to get a short-term rental permit, so it's a different, it's called something different, but it's gonna look very similar to the way we've been handling it, I just won't go to, put in there that it wouldn't go to a planning commission, it would be a staff review only, with the requirements we have in our code that we've already been using. Cap it up to three percent of the total number of homes in the city, distance from the other property with a short-term rental permit is three hundred feet. The owner of, or property manager must live within ten miles, this is an idea from the conference, and I thought that was a good one. And then, short-term rental permit is not transferable if ownership changes. That way, it doesn't go from, like, owner to owner, doesn't stay with the property. If you have new owners come in, they have to reapply. Okay, I'm gonna scroll to the code where I made the changes, and then we can discuss how this works. And I don't know if we need to get into all of it, I summarized it there, that's really what I did, but I'm ha, open to discussion on this.
Can I, if you don't mind, just start with a comment?
Yeah.
And that is that, from an enforcement perspective, I would say this living ten miles is a terrible idea. 'Cause good luck enforcing that.
Sure, like, I think when they initially apply, you can say, who's your property manager? If you have op, if you have some issues, some code enforcement issues, again, like, we need to talk to your property manager, where are they located, or, yeah.
I think that if-
I agree.
So you ask them, where do they live?
But, yeah.
They tell you.
They make something up.
They move the next day, they lie, like, who knows, right?
Sure.
As opposed to what you're trying to achieve with that is a quick response.
Sure.
So I think that what you build into the code instead is, your property manager has to respond to a complaint in person, however that works, within X amount of time.
Okay.
Like, get rid of it, who cares if they drive really fast?
I, I actually don't think it would be that hard to enforce. So like, at the library, when you're wanting a library card, you have to bring in a utility thing, a utility letter with your name at the top. And that's how you prove where you live, like-
It would be the-
That's part of the application.
At the application time, sure, but then when something happens, right? Okay, where do you live? Katie doesn't have a way to compel somebody to tell them where they live, she's not the police. So then it becomes, okay, what's the remedy? The only remedy would be to revoke the nightly rental license, right? 'Cause you're not complying with it. As opposed to when you have a situational, like, fact where you needed to be here within an hour, or call within an hour, whatever the situation was. You didn't do that, that's something Katie can latch on to right now.
Right, I stop the clock, start the clock as soon as I make that call.
Yeah.
And if they don't come in person within an hour to resolve it, then I can say, oh, you didn't meet this requirement.
That's easy to enforce.
You're in violation.
So we're gonna potentially revoke your conditional use, or your permit.
Plus, and if you're the person that's ten minutes, so if you live within ten miles, but you're out of town, your backup person is, lives in Park City. So is that illegal now, is it, are they violating the terms? I don't know, I mean, I think what we want is, we just want a quick response to whatever the problem is, if it rises to that level.
Well, that's exactly, like, the point of it, is to get a quick response, so I think that, you know, I think, I like that idea, I think that's good. Because I think it accomplishes it without the code enforcement issue of trying to prove where they live.
I think it's just a lot of administrative headache, as opposed to just looking at the result.
Yeah. Yeah. So-
We talked about the three hundred foot thing, too, I'll just throw it out there, I don't think that's far enough.
What do you think would be good?
Thousand feet at least, I mean, you wanna separate these things, don't you?
I mean, let me show you some current situations we have with, with these, so.
Yep.
Three hundred feet's a hundred yards, it's a football field.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so in a residential area, three hundred feet in any direction-
Well, you could use Ash Court right there, just measure from that house in the corner of Ash Court, all the way to the end.
Is this the, this one, right?
Are you going for the property, are you going for the short term?
Yeah, which one are you?
I was just laughing, I was gonna have you measure the Ash Street cul-de-sac, 'cause I bet it's three hundred feet from the corner house where I live, to the Wild Willow.
This one. Yeah, so this cul-de-sac, your cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
To-
Just Wild Willow to the corner is three hundred feet.
Okay, I know that there's one that's right here, but it's not licensed, so, I'm gonna just, in the middle of the cul-de-sac. Okay, I know that there's one that's right here, but it's not licensed, so, I'm gonna just, the middle of the cul-de-sac. To the one that's not licensed, is over a thousand feet, but that, you know, this is the whole.
Right, that's most of the southern half of Wild Willow, at a thousand feet.
Right, and so I do know, like, for example, that we have one on Aspen. Actually, it's on Spruce.
Are these licensed with, like, the homeowner or the home, does that make sense, so like if the homeowner ever sold the home?
What I'm saying is, this is one of the things I wanted to change, is it goes with the owner.
Yeah.
So if they, if they move, then the new owner, if they wanna do it, have to reapply.
Move. Would have to a license.
So there's one here, we just, this is probably our newest that we approved, oops.
Yep.
Okay, so, from the distance from their house. From that one to, where do you think I should go, to the Aspen Road one, which is.
So are we doing it as the crow flies then?
Little further, there you go.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think you landed almost, it's the next one, isn't it?
No, there's no house there, I think.
It's on the other side of the.
Might be that one, that's a thousand, so, I don't know, I mean, it just, when you start doing the circle, it really gets kind of a big circle, but I'm not opposed to it.
So at three hundred feet though, you could have.
So three hundred is, yeah, maybe that's not enough, cause that's.
No, you could have twenty of them in that neighborhood.
Three hundred is just adjacent.
Yeah, so maybe three hundred's not enough, maybe five hundred, maybe, six hundred is what we do for like, to send a public notice and.
So five hundred?
And most of the time, if I have to send a public notice, it's within six hundred feet somewhere in Wild Willow, we're looking at like fifty, forty to, thirty to fifty properties we're sending that notice to.
When you.
So, it can get pretty big.
Let me just pose this question, when you look at that map right there, how many of those houses do you think it would be reasonable to have them be short-term rooms, just in total?
In this whole, like, the way it is right now.
Yeah, we're just saying. Is it two or is it thirty?
Were we saying three percent?
Three percent of total city, we can break it up, and so by increasing the distance, that simply breaks them up.
Right. Right, that's a good way to look at it.
Um, Katie, what is the number on three percent?
So right now, that would be about eighteen. Total in the city, and I, I know we talked about doing these districts, but. I think that'd be har- it's just gonna be a little hard for me to establish that, and I'd have to look at how many houses there are in each, it's just gonna take more than that eighty-twenty thing we were talking about.
Yeah, I've got a theoretical question. Why, why be against short-term rentals?
Okay, so, the main thing, and I'll only speak from what I'm seeing in my professional role when it comes to other communities and challenges with that, right? The main challenges with short-term rentals generally, right, are, um, noise, parking, and trash, those are the big ones, increase in traffic too, but those are the three main things, right? So, when you have, um, higher density of them, you're just increasing the number of those types of problems in a neighborhood, right? While simultaneously displacing the amount of households that are establishing roots in that same place, so you look at a place like Park City. Which is like pushing past fifty percent of our nightly rentals, your, your neighborhoods aren't neighborhoods anymore because there's no rules, so you have. New developments that go in and two-thirds of the places in there are nightly rentals, and then you have people, like, I feel more about like this trying to help people out than we did before when we were talking about the commercial, right? Cause this is literally in any neighborhood, could impact any of us, and then you, and I, I get complaints every day where people are saying, hey, I'm living next door to this place, it's a nightmare. I'm calling the sheriff's office two, three times a week, and they don't ever do anything, nothing's changed, so they're gonna call Katie, please Katie, do something about it, her tools are limited, right? So, this is the reason why I'm suggesting that the time is early on, like now, where we don't have that many, to disperse it. So it's not this concentration, so yeah, you might have to deal with one that lives close to you, but hopefully not seven, or eight, or fifteen, right?
So, in, for the sake of the discussion.
Yeah.
We can get extra taxes from STRs, they're increasing the city's taxable basis.
Sure.
It's a different way of commercial use of personal property, so, why do we care more about the existing homeowners? Who are located next to short-term rentals than the existing homeowners?
I would say it's because of the use, right, so the commercial use has been designated for commercial purposes, right? Versus, we're talking about literally commercial use that's occurring in residential zones, these are operated with less oversight than hotels have by far. And so they do, they have an outsized impact in neighborhoods, and most of the places that have a lot of problems is because they're. Several years ahead of us in terms of density, and now the cap's out of the bag, they can't do anything about it, it's very challenging. So you're right, it does provide some, some revenue in that way, but, um, but it seems like the impact is significant, so. That, that's, you asked what the issues were, that's just what they are.
Yeah, no, no, and I'm not in favor of short-term rentals, it was just a brain exercise.
Let me throw in one other point, the other point is you, you shift the incentives of voters in your area, you know, as you're undermining the city. Or undermining the community, you're shifting so you have people who are incentivized to decrease the cost of homeownership as opposed to. Building things or supporting taxes for schools, or other things that are essential to, to a community. And so I think it becomes, to Scott's point, you end up having a higher crime, higher traffic, higher trash area. And in addition to that, you have a set of voters who are always going to vote against spending money on things like schools that you need, that are essential for having a community.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so what are your thoughts on, uh, on where this is going?
We're gonna stick with a thousand feet.
A thousand?
Yeah, if you just take, pick any house, just right in the middle, and do the circle you were talking about with three hundred feet, and then with a thousand feet, and just see how many houses you grab.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna start here in the middle, and I'm gonna go to a thousand. Okay, right about there, and then, removing that.
So then, yeah, so just kind of imagining that, you could probably get three in that map in total, like, one in the middle, one in the inner.
I think you could maybe get, maybe two.
I think, yeah, maybe one or two.
And maybe if you had one here, here, and way over here.
That's what I mean, one way over there, so now do the three hundred feet, same spot.
Yeah.
How many, how many STRs are currently in Wild Willows?
So we have four total in the city, and I would say that they're all in Wild Willow, if you include like Summit Haven.
And is that permitted or unpermitted?
Well, those are the ones that are permitted, but the unpermitted ones, that would tip it over, and I, the ones that I'm aware of are also in Wild Willow too. So.
So, I, so, I hear these, I'm not necessarily in favor of short-term rentals. But where I would lean is in favor of non-corporate ownership of STRs. So, limiting the, whoever is the owner of the STR has to prove, and, and the burden of proof is on them. That they have no shell corporations, no other LLCs, no other entities within their ownership that they benefit from. That operate more than five STRs. Because, I think that for, for people who are looking to make some passive income. I don't wanna restrict that, I do wanna penalize the corporate ownership, and I agree with Scott's point. That like, you should respond within the amount of time that Katie sets, and I think that kind of determines whether you're a good actor or a bad actor. Uh, but I think of like, the Olympics coming in a few years, and how many, like, people might just wanna leave their houses. For like, the month that the Olympics are here, and like, but no, we've already said that only these three people can have an STR. And so, like, everybody else loses out on the chance to make legal passive income during that time.
Month wouldn't be short term.
Everybody, hold, hang on one sec, so, I understand what you're saying, but I also don't want Wild Willow to turn into Olympic Village, like. So, I am normally on your side, that everybody should have the opportunity to do what they wanna do with their money, but that also opens up another gateway. Katie, just really fast for my own benefit, can you just measure Oak Circle, it doesn't really matter, what are, what are some of these cul-de-sacs running in distance?
Do you want me to measure from like, the whole?
It doesn't even, yeah, I don't even really matter, I'm just like trying to grasp. Um, you know, what some of these cul-de-sacs that you and, that we all live on, like, you know, because I don't think, I think having more than one in some of these cul-de-sacs or neighborhoods. Gets really tight, right, so like, yeah, there's kind of a thousand feet, Oak Circle based off your thing is probably less than three hundred. So I think the answer is somewhere between three and a thousand, I think a thousand is too restrictive, and I think three might not be enough. Um, I like that it's capped at three percent, like, I think that, that now you're restricting it to eighteen, and the locations that they can have. I don't know how you're gonna, again, go back to that, it's like, I, I, I like the idea, but again, I only wanna implement actionable things, and like, there is no way to prove. An LLC in Wyoming doesn't own another LLC that owns another, like, that is so easy, I, I mean, I have two LLCs myself, like, that is like, good luck. And that's why they make them in Wyoming and South Dakota and those places, so, I just don't, I, I really am not a fan of making rules that we can't enforce. So, um, I didn't mean to cut everybody off, I, I think that, that's my input for you Katie, is that I think the three percent is good. I like what Scott's saying in terms of measuring response time, and that, that response can be like. The return, like, you need to answer your call and return your message within X number of minutes, cause I think to your point, like, you could very well be on vacation. In New Mexico, and have somebody more than thirty minutes away, so let's look at that globally, like, kind of what it is, I mean, most likely it's gonna be managed by a local company anyway, let's just be careful.
The vast majority are managed by companies in person, and actually, um, companies outside of Utah, I see a lot of that too.
Right.
So some out-of-state company that just has a bunch of them in Utah, and then they have local employees that do stuff.
I think, for me, if you kinda look how Wild Willow's chopped up, you can kind of see just kinda some of the rectangles, right, there's almost six rectangles to Wild Willow there. And I really think like, you know, keeping it somewhere in that one, two, or rectangle, and I'm, I'm like kinda being very liberal, but you can kinda just see the way the red kinda makes those little squares. There, now there it looks like less than, than four, but, I mean, keeping it down to like six in that greater Wild Willow area.
Yeah.
I think is six or seven, like, there's gonna be eighteen, but currently Wild Willow is the biggest development, right, like, so.
So what about like five hundred feet?
Yeah, let's look at that, so like, to the idea of the squares.
Well, I, yeah, it just is kinda.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a good idea, thought, like, it's about five hundred, I'd say, in any direction. So maybe, is that a number that we can, you know, agree to disagree, but we'll move forward?
Well, and one other quick point fast, so, I mean, going back to your concern akin with the Olympics coming, anything over thirty days is into short-term rental. And so that's kind of something that we don't need to really worry about, you know, if you wanna rent out their home for a month, that's a long-term rental, that's not covered by this.
So thirty days are less.
That's how you rent out your house, McKenna, is that, it's for the Olympics, we tell them I gotta take you to the thirty-one days.
It's a month, yep.
They might as well use it.
All the time, baby.
Yep, and you negotiate the price to get something reasonable.
That is not a bad one.
Okay.
Yeah, were there other, I guess I just wanna look at this, so not a conditional use.
So. Rich, what are your thoughts on this, like, the distance and?
I'm similar, I think three hundred's too short, I think a thousand's probably too long, I, I understand the sentiment, but I think. We'd end up, I mean, I would love that, but I think it's probably too long.
Okay, so.
I think we kinda wanted to reflect some of the reality on the ground, even, you know, between the licensed and the unlicensed, and. I'd say five hundred's probably a lot closer to.
You say five hundred between property ones.
Property to.
Obviously, obviously, yeah, obviously.
Well, we would measure property to property.
Maybe between houses.
Not structures, not, especially if they're using pergolas or anything.
Right, no, property wise.
Hot tubs, it's actually between hot tubs.
There you go.
Fifty, five hundred, so I'm gonna go with that and think about it, and we'll talk about this more next time, but, other than, and then we'll. Have the response time in there, Trevor, are you good with that direction?
Yep.
Okay, okay, good, so, I think that covers short-term rentals.
What does three percent of houses look like?
Eighteen.
Eighteen houses within Francis?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so I mean, that'll help to keep the numbers down as well.
Sure.
Can I just recommend that as you draft the language for it, just, I would encourage like, strong revocation measures for. For non-compliance with the code, right? When you look at some of the county's codes, there's a lot of rules, and not a lot about what happens when you don't follow rules.
Okay, first complaint results in an investigation, and if warranted, the city will issue a written warning to the responsible party. Provides notice of the complaint, description of the violation, and actions to be performed to correct a violation.
I would say second complaint gets it revoked.
Upon receipt of a second complaint, the city will conduct an investigation, and if warranted, will take one of the following course of actions, one, issue another warning, issue a citation for violations. Initiate formal cause proceedings to revoke the conditional use, and I'll have to change that of course, and then initiate revocation proceedings as proceeded in this section, so there's another. So.
I think it's too big of an administrative burden, I agree with Scott, just revoke it.
Okay, second, everyone on board with that, two, within a one-year period, within.
You just want it set up so that the people that have it really want to keep it, and there's strong, like, strong language to make sure that if they don't play this game properly.
Yeah.
Then they're gonna lose it, and they're scarce, cause there's only eighteen, and there's the feet percentage and all that.
Within a three-year period.
Three years?
I'm feeling these are.
I wouldn't put a period on it at all, I would leave it open.
So if they get one complaint at the beginning, and then ten years later they get another, they're done?
So, you would, so the issue then though becomes defining what a complaint is, there's a difference between, like.
Like finding a violation.
So the flip side of this, right, and when I talk to owners is, it is, it's very challenging to deal with folks that aren't following the rules, if they're getting loud or whatever. The real problem with the STRs is not so much the, the people, yeah, they are great, the, the clients, it's the management not being responsive, that's the problem.
It's the management.
You don't show up when you're supposed to, you don't respond, you don't kick somebody out, if there's already one complaint, and we've explained there's one complaint, they're gonna be there a week, and now there was a second noise complaint or something. Maybe they need to get kicked out, but they don't do that, they just let it ride, so I think that, I don't know, we're gonna get through that language right now. But the, the main focus, I would argue, for the revocation side of things, is being a bad actor, right? Not doing what you're supposed to be doing as the owner or property manager, as opposed to just getting two noise complaints, cause that is super hard to manage, I mean, I, I think that would, that's too complicated.
I'd say, yeah, you have like two substantiated, like, you investigate it, the city finds that there is a violation, you have two violations within a certain period, then you revoke it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm not advocating for like, hey, we had two complaints, sorry, we're revoking it, like, they have to be legitimate, they can't.
Right. Right.
You have an Airbnb in Wild Willow, you have a bachelor party there, and the guys are loud, like, the owner can't control that, so there's gotta be.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's gotta be some guidelines there, like Scott said.
Having been present for when this was written, I like it the way it's written, I think it gives the city the leeway and latitude to address it on a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
And they can go from warning to revocation in the same second penalty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, okay, so, raise your hand if you're on board with keeping it.
But. But, but, I will also just throw out, it also allows maybe too much leeway, where like, we've had people try to skirt through the rules, like, an ambiguous code. Is a code that's easy to argue against, and so it could be viewed as unfair treatment for one player to get a warning, and for another player to get their license revoked.
What if we had a severely punitive, you know, fee associated with the second warning and the third warning, or the third citation, so you say.
Like with the noise complaints?
You get fined ten X your nightly rate.
Okay, so second is ten times.
Yeah, ten X your nightly rate.
And then.
Also hard to get to, figuring that out.
Okay, well, let's say it's three thousand dollars, I don't know, choose a number.
If we.
Okay.
If we all apply for STR licenses, that'll take care of a third of the licenses available in the city, so.
That's true.
Do we currently have to be operating?
Yeah, no, you can just apply for the license, you don't have to actually do it, yeah.
You can have the license.
That's true, I don't know if you're operating or not, you're not getting.
Oh, I'm sure I'm gonna do it after this conversation.
Just keep your kids quiet, you know?
I'm doing it for the Olympics.
All of a sudden, the licenses are gone, alright, last thing to talk about tonight on this is. This is this Ag One and Ag Two uses, I thought maybe we can knock that discussion out for the most part, so, I added a note for him in it prohibiting any use not listed in the table. So that kinda goes to Trevor's point, that if it's not on the table, then we're not allowing it. Um, add animal accessory building and park trails and recreation as allowed uses for Ag One, these are things that were missing that I thought, like, they're showing up in other zones and it should be there. Eliminate higher-impact commercial and industrial type uses like storage yards, auto repair, sawmills, golf course, hold on. RV parks and campgrounds removed from Ag One zone but allowed in. Arving parks and campgrounds removed from Ag One zone but allowed in Ag Two, this goes to Trevor's, you know, the comment about if they wanna do those things, then they have to have a zone change, so then it turns it into a legislative issue. And then last, should kennels be allowed, and if so, do we set for noise, smell, capacity, we have to set some regulations. Okay, sorry, I got through that, thoughts, and we can look at the code.
Why, why golf courses, that was the only thing that stood out when I was prepping for this, I don't know, why golf courses? I think we're rethinking of like, uh, what are those big driving ranges and, uh, Topgolf?
Topgolf, Topgolf.
Well, and it could be an actual golf course, because the thought here is, we actually had someone come in and say, hey, we wanna do a golf course in Hidden Meadow, where it's all conservation land, and the mayor was like, no, we're not doing that in Francis, so.
We've got a ton of golf courses.
He's just like, if that's the last thing, we need to have water.
All private, yeah.
Maybe we should allow it, have a public golf course for once.
Should we just put public golf courses?
Yeah, it can't be private.
We could put public golf courses allowed.
I'm not a golfer, I just, of that list, like.
It stuck out, it was just something that had come up, and the mayor is like.
Golf courses?
So one thing, I mean, if we're trying to be wise with water, why would we want golf courses?
Yeah, right.
Exactly, that's really what it comes down to is.
Yeah.
So that we can be like the rich people.
I am rich.
I, I was.
No, it's nice.
My name is Rich.
Must be nice.
For kennels, can we elaborate, or just?
I think kennels should be in allowed use.
They're conditional right now, so, I'm deciding, you know, do we eliminate them, or do we allow them? And, seems like in the Ag zones, it makes sense to allow kennels, but we need to have some really good regulations on them.
Didn't we, don't we have in the CUP or whatever you did for the kennel over there?
What are we, what are we defining as kennels?
That is a, yeah, that was a little bit of a different, cuz it's in the commercial zone, but this is.
This is Ag One and Ag Two.
Ag One and Ag Two, and, so these are the, the properties that are supposed to have a little more land around them, so a kennel kind of makes sense. And that would be anything more than three dogs, by the way, like.
So this is just dogs, it's not other animals?
Well, we should probably establish that.
Cuz, cuz like, I see in my head, like, for calving, you know, like, if you've got dairy cows, you've got all the calves in kennels.
We'll just say dog kennels, because.
A dog, that'd be a farm.
Yeah, Ag, Ag uses, those are definitely allowed, let me just go over the code, like, of course, we're gonna allow
That's a farm, that's a dairy farm.
Ag uses in the Ag zone, right?
Yeah, let's allow the cows.
Agricultural activities allowed, right?
Nice.
So kennels, though, I can put on there like, dog kennels, and then that, I don't know if they have cat kennels anywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Isn't, I think there is actually a term for like, uh, the delineation between livestock and small pets, like, I'm blanking, mostly cuz I'm tired, but
Yeah.
I think we could look into that.
I'm gonna put dog kennels just to create less ambiguity.
What if they have a hunting outfit, what if they?
Exactly, then they're gonna need a kennel, is it allowed?
Yeah.
I think probably in Ag One and Two, it makes sense, maybe not in the residential zones, but then what kind of regulations do we put on a kennel?
Kennels plus place space.
Yeah, I think probably just buffers, right?
Buffers, right, yeah.
And a place space.
And, but you.
And do we wanna indoors, do we wanna be able to like, do we allow outdoor kennels with barking? What about commercial versus non-commercial?
Well, and it'd be a bit unusual to be very restrictive of dog kennels, but not calving.
Let's actually just not allow it, and if they wanna change that, they have to come back and ask for a zone change.
So anyone that does hunting, like, I, I know of people that have these kennel conditional use permits now. They are mostly hunters, and they use them for their own, like, their own use, so you're saying they'd have to come in and ask for a code change to do?
Well, how many dogs?
Like, five.
Yeah, five, five or more dogs, come in and ask for a zone change.
So. For a code change.
Code change.
A code change is like, a thousand dollars.
But, but is, is our issue really the person who's got five dogs, or is our issue, we don't want a dog boarding facility?
Well, yeah, and maybe we cap it at five dogs or something that, and, wouldn't be commercial.
Yeah, but now you got your side hustle, right, like, so now it's like, well, I can make sixty dollars a night on.
Then we put non-commercial kennels?
Yeah, we see non-commercial.
Non-commercial.
Yeah.
Non-commercial kennels.
Are approved.
And you don't need a business license cuz they're non-commercial.
Yep.
Okay.
Cuz I mean, if they could have a bunch of cows, why can't they have a bunch of dogs?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have a bird dog, I get it, like, I bird hunt, so I mean, I understand the logic behind it, I'm just trying to find the reasonable avenue.
Do we cap it at a certain number, like, non-commercial kennels up to?
Do, do we cap the cows?
Cap the cows.
We don't cap the cows, so, I guess do, we don't cap the dogs.
Do we wanna just make it a conditional use permit?
No, no.
Cuz I just feel like they can do what they want, as long as it doesn't impact private property owners, and so if it's a conditional.
Well, it's not commercial. But they still have to follow the noise ordinance, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I think we just say non-commercial kennels, then that takes care of a lot of issues. Okay, I'm gonna run back up to the top and then.
So if it's their own private hunting outfit, those are non-commercial kennels.
Yeah.
Even if they're used for a commercial use.
The dogs are used for courses with kennels, yeah.
But they're not kennels, okay, sounds good.
Okay, all right, so we took out animal hospital, contractors, equipment storage yard, contractor's storage yard, golf course, we're good with that? Okay, com, non-commercial kennels now, um, outdoor commercial recreation. Uh, instead of having it there, I just put it here, parks, trails, and non-commercial recreation facilities. And we wouldn't allow commercial recreation, are we good with that?
And, and this is just Ag One and Ag Two, right, I mean, if they wanna have it, they could do it in.
Exactly, Ag One, this is Ag One and Ag Two.
In the commercials, sorry.
In the commercial zone.
Yeah.
Or the industrial zone.
Yeah, zone two. No sawmills, no schools, this, we got worried about, you know, there'd be like a boarding school potentially, or some kind of private, like drug rehab.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why we took it out, and then if we need to change it later, we can. Um, welding, blacksmith, auto body repair, all of those taken out. This is Ag Two, so an Ag One RV Parker campground is also removed, and then they'd have to apply for a zone change to be able to do it in an Ag Two zone. Looks, everybody on board with this, nothing too crazy, controversial, okay, fantastic. All right, I think that was it for this, uh, code discussion, so going back to the agenda, that takes us to the minutes, number four.
Are you ready for a?
I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Let's vote, Scott?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, I don't have anything to update you on, if you had any questions for me, I'll take them.
Any questions?
I thought that was a hand, but it's not a hand.
Oh, it's an C.
And.
Uh, so we'll just go down the line, and sake of fairness, Trevor, any questions? No?
Okay.
There are no questions, if that, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to adjourn.
For a second.
Aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Justin, you give me dirty looks when we're talking, I was trying really hard not to talk, but we shared.
The chatterbox.
You were told by the mayor.
Feel like I got a couple dirty looks, I'm wondering if it was for my questions, or?
Did we stop, uh, did we stop recording?
Stop recording, I'm gonna go, stop recording.
I tried, I caught myself several times, I said it out loud, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't need to.
I think it's done.
I wait until the body cam is silenced before I call.
There you go.
Okay, see you guys, have a good night.